All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the September 13th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on September 21st, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. So, on the back table, there's a half-page speaker request form. If you would like to speak on an item that's on the agenda and you are neither the applicant or the agent, I would ask that you fill that out and turn it in up here in the corner. Staff will then get those to me and it keeps me organized with respect to items that people want to speak on during the meeting. With that, we'll go ahead and get started. Roll call. Jerry, note that everyone is here. I'm Les Sandy. Approval of the August 23rd, 2021 minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Comments? Notes?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda consists of the consent agenda, items three through seven, followed by normal commission items eight through 24.
I move for approval of the agenda.
Followed by our normal items. Motion for approval of today's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second for approval of today's agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Consent agenda?
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Brittany Mollater, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1417 for Mary Corbin to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a permanent residence in this suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1417 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1609 Laura Pankraths to review two off-premise signs within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in a highway service district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1609 with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 1906 for Big Game Storage LLC Chris Peterson is the agent to review a lighted on-premise sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district dwelling unit in a commercial district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1906 with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review CU 20-13 for Richard Radeski to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a permanent single-family residence in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 2013 with conditions. Item seven is minor plant MPL 21-58 for Gerard and Michelle Milner to reconfigure lot lines to create lots 2A-1 and 2B-1 of Battle Creek Mountain Estates. Staff is recommending approval of minor plant MPL 21-58 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items staff wishes to pull from the agenda? Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the agenda? For those folks in the audience, items three, four, five, six, and seven are on the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an item where we will vote on all of those items at one time. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on items three through seven? Noting none.
Moved to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of today's consent agenda. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item eight.
Morning Commissioners, Madison Ransom, Environmental Planner. Agenda item number eight is conditional use permit CU 21-51 to allow an accessory structure prior to a primary structure on the subject property. The applicant is Patrick and Amy Rose. The location is 5690 Leroy Street. The current zoning is suburban residential district and existing land use is residential and access is off Leroy Street. There is no special flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their view of the conditional use permit applications. These are up on the screen. Number one, yes, it appears that by allowing this conditional use permit, it should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, yes, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of the other properties in the immediate vicinity. Garages are an accessory use in residential districts. Number three, yes, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvements of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, yes, access is off Leroy Street. Number five, yes, a residential garage should have no impact on traffic congestion. Number six, yes, the property is in suburban residential district, a garage as a primary structure is allowed with a conditional use permit. Number seven, the future land use of subject property is suburban residential district. Allowing this conditionings permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The property history, there's a 24 by 36 garage built in 1979. There is a shed, there is a building permit not required for that shed, and the removal of the 14 by 70-foot single wide mobile home. The property is on public utilities. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. Highway commented that there is not an approach permit on file, one must be filed. Staff has made this a condition of approval. On September 3rd, staff performed a site visit and found there to be a 24 by 36-foot garage and a small shed that is under 144 square feet and not permanently anchored to the ground. Staff has received no complaints regarding this conditional use permit. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 21-51 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I have no further questions. I would entertain a motion for approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of agenda item eight, CU 21-51. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item nine.
Good morning Commissioners, Chutima Sabun, Planning Department. Agenda item number nine is conditional use permit CU 2149 to allow a guest house to be utilized on the subject property. The applicants are Kyle and Claire Schmidt. Mrs. Schmidt is on Zoom if you have any question for her. The property is at 13989 Perry Place. This item was continued from the August 23rd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant to re-advertise the conditional use permit request and to send and to resend the notice of hearing letters as the more appropriate use is a guest house. The zoning ordinance lists seven criterias that planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They are as follow. Criteria one, yes, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, yes, the requested use is considered a residential use and should not substantially impair or diminish the user's values or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Criteria three, yes, the requested use should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for the users permitted in the district. Criteria four, yes, the proposed guest house will be in the existing detached garage. It will utilize the existing on-site wastewater treatment system. Electric city is on one meter. The guest house will utilize the same driveway as the primary residence. Criteria five, yes, the access is off of Perry Place via the existing approach. Perry Place currently serves four residences. Criteria six. Criteria six, the current zoning district is agriculture district. The requested use conforms to all applicable regulations of the district if this conditional use permit is approved. Criteria seven, the future land use is identified as agriculture district. A guest house with an approved conditional use permit is consistent with the district. Pennington County zoning ordinance sections 318 lists the criteria that must be met to allow a guest house. The proposed guest house met all the requirements. The property consists of a single-family residence and a detached garage. There are two on-site wastewater treatment systems on the property and they have a current operating permit. That is a violation COVO 20 that 0054 leaving quarters in the existing garage without an approved conditional use permit. The request that was round two for the interdepartmental review, emergency services commented. It looks like the applicant has his existing house number 13989 posted where the main driveway intersects Perry Place. If approved, the accessory dwelling will need a separate physical address and the applicant would need to post it with the other number at the end of the driveway and ensure both numbers are displayed on the two structures visible from the driveway per Pennington County Ordinance number 20. Staff comments, this will be addressed as a condition of approval. Black Hills Electric Cooperative commented that they currently only have one meter on the property. County Ordinance Enforcement Officer commented that currently current, that's a violation on the property. If this conditional use permit is approved, we'll clear the violation. Staff performed a site visit on the subject property and there is no complaint or concern from the neighbor were received. Staff recommend approval of conditional use permit CU 2149 with 15 conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
This is for Brittany. Brittany, can you explain to me the difference between a mother-in-law and a guest house?
Sure. A guest house has a limitation of 700 square feet. This one, or excuse me, an ADU has a limitation of 700 square feet. A guest house has 1,000 square feet. The guest house does require that the primary residence have owner-occupied status. The EDU does not require owner-occupied status. It could be a long-term rental or owner-occupied. The guest house has a limitation of 180 days per year and cannot be rented out, and EDU can be.
So, I guess 180 days gets a little confusing to me because, well, number one, how do you track that? And what would happen if it was a relative that needed to stay with another relative? 180 days, I don't understand why that deadline or that set them out.
Right. That was something that was done by a committee prior to. So, the EDU came after the guest house ordinance, but the guest house ordinance was pretty specific that it was only meant for, you know, intermittent family to stay there, not to be rented. That's why we went with the EDU ordinance to allow those to be able to be rented.
So, a mother-in-law, can you, can they be there year-round on a mother-in-law?
Not in a guest house. In an EDU, they can, under the EDU requirements.
Okay. Further questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Don't see any. Mrs. Schmidt is on Zoom. Do you have any questions before the board votes?
No, I do not.
Thank you.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of item CU 21-49 with 15 conditions. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 10.
Item 10 is conditional use permit CU 2150 to allow an accessory structure prior to a primary structure on the subject property. The applicants are Rodney and Triva Golds. Mr. Golds is here in the audience if you have any question. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit application. Criteria one, yes, it appears that by allowing this conditional use permit, it should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, yes, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Are an accessory use in the residential district. Criteria three, yes, by allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, yes, the purpose of the proposed shed is for storage use. The property is located in the spatial flood hazard area to include the floodway. Prior to any disturbance in the boundaries of the spatial flood hazard area, an approved flood plain development permit, I'm sorry, an approved flood plain development permit be obtained. Access will be off of South Creek View Road and approach permit is required. Criteria five, yes, the requested use should not significantly impact traffic congestion. Criteria six, the property is zone rural residential district. It's a primary structure, is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. Criteria seven, the future land use of the subject property is also rural residential district. Allowing this conditional use permit with an approved, I'm so sorry, allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The property consists of a shed that is under 144 square feet and not permanently anchored to the ground. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. County certified flood plain manager commented that there is a spatial flood hazard area on the property to include floodway. Every flood plain development permit will be required for any development within the boundary. Staff comments, this will be included as a condition of approval. No significant concerns or objections from other department were received. Staff performed a site visit and spoke with the applicant. The applicant stated that the location of the proposed shed will be north of the garden bed. The existing shed will be removed from the property. Staff has not received any complaints or concern regarding this requested use. Staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit with 10 conditions.
Question for staff on this item? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 21-50 with 10 conditions. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve. Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion?
Could I ask the applicant a question? I noted, maybe you can ask, answer for me, Chutima, but he did note that the property's well taken care of and that's nice to see when it's not being used. Is there plans to develop it in the future? I noticed there's a picking cable along with the RV that's parked on it in the picture.
The applicant is here.
Sir, if you'd just come up to the podium, state your name for the record.
Basically, my question is, we get asked the same thing by other people that contend we look the other way on these things. I'm just asking, do you plan to develop it in the future? That's my question.
Not at this time. The picking table that you see to the left of the shed actually is on the lot of our neighbor.
Okay. I understand.
The dividing line is just to the right of that pile of dirt that's on their plan.
So, you just park the RV on it for storage right now?
Well, we own the lot and we just park it there when we're not using it.
Okay. Thank you.
The shed will just be replaced by another shed.
Understood. A compliment, you take nice care of your property there that's undeveloped. Thank you.
Further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 11.
Item 11 is conditional use permit CU 2152 to allow a recreational resort on the subject property to include six cabins, a garage, and the existing single-family residence to be used as a caretaker's, manager's residence. The applicant is Albert Sutton and he is here in the audience if you have any question. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They are as follow. Criteria one, yes, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, the requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the user's value or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Established use of campgrounds and rental cabins are present within one mile of the subject property such as the YMCA Giraffe Park Day Camp and Black Hills Whispering Pines Criteria three, yes, the requested use should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for users permitted in the district. Criteria four, the existing residents will continually use the existing utilities. New on-site wastewater treatment system and drain field and new well will be utilized for the rental cabins. Criteria five, the requested use will utilize the existing approach on the subject property. The requested use will utilize the existing approach on the subject property south of the property, which the applicants also own and operate. The rental cabins named Campfire cabins. The existing approach, the existing approach on the subject property will be removed and regraded. An access eastman will be recorded at the register of deeds. The applicant intends to operate the proposed resort less than 180 days per calendar year. Criteria six, the current zoning district is agriculture district. The requested use will conform to all applicable regulations of the district if this conditional use permit is approved. Criteria seven, allowing this conditional use permit should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The subject property consists of a single-family residence. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. Emergency services stated that the submitted plan do not show an access to 12644 Campfire Drive will be maintained after the addition of the proposed cabin. Staff comment, the applicant indicated that he has proposed to create an internal road to connect the property south of the subject property that currently has six rental cabins and manager's caretaker's residence that operated under Campfire Cabin. An access eastman will be recorded and the existing approach of 12644 Campfire Drive will be removed and regraded per the county highway department comment. The access of the subject property will use the same, will be the same access from 12644 Campfire Drive. Emergency services also stated that physical addressing for emergency purpose response to this development will be key if approved, as will properly proper posting of assigned addresses and unit numbers. Staff comment, this is included as a condition of approval. County Highway commented that an access eastman will be recorded to connect the two properties as this will create a secondary access. The existing approach will need to be removed and regraded to maintain the drainage. Staff comments, this is included as a condition of approval. The applicant is aware of this and is intending to comply with the county highway comment. U.S. Forest Service made a comment regarding to the U.S. Forest Service land and the comment is in the attachment. And staff, this is included as a condition of approval. And staff, um, this is included as a condition of approval. Staff performed a side visit and met with the applicant. Staff has not received any complaints or concern regarding the requested use. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-one fifty-two with twenty-three conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I noticed in this narrative describing the property that, uh, John Calley would be doing the septic system. I just want to say that John's probably one of the most reputable contractors relative to installing septics in the Hill City area. And Shane Alexander, he's got a good reputation as well, with the, uh, well, so that was my only concern. But when I saw those names, I got a pretty good feeling about this.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-one dash fifty-two with twenty-three conditions. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item twelve.
Item twel- twelve is conditional use permit CU twenty-one fifty-three to allow an illuminated on-premise sign to be located within fifteen hundred feet of residential district or developing, uh, dwelling unit. The property owner is Keystone Avengers. The applicant is Peggy Bussin. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission will main- may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They are as followed. Criteria one, yes, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, the requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the user's values or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Criteria three, allowing the, um, criteria three, yes, allowing the existing on-premise sign to be illuminated under the premise of this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. Criteria four, yes, access, um, um, the access is via the existing approach. Utilities are already in place. Criteria five, the existing approach will provide, will provide ingress and egress as to minimize traffic congestion on Highway sixteen A. Criteria six, the requ- the requested use conforms to all applicable regulations of the highway service district in which is, when, in which it is located with an approved conditional use permit. Criteria seven, the future land use is identified as highway services. The proposed that use is consistent with this district. The property consists of, um, a garage with living quarters, uh, commercial visitor center, and palm barn that are existing onsite wastewater treatment system. The, um, the, there is also a conditional use permit. CU fourteen twenty-three was approved by the planning commission um, to allow a golf driving range and a helipad in the highway services, uh, highway service district. That is a valiant that was approved last, last year. VA twenty, um, dash zero-three was approved by the board of adjustment to reduce front yard setback from five feet to zero foot setback on the premise side for an, and pre- premise sign. There are two sign, um, on the subject property. One is the, to the north of the subject property, uh, uh, right here. This is the existing side that the applicant would like to, um, illum- illuminate it, illuminate the sign. And the second side is right here on the, um, the side of the property. The requested you, uh, the request was routed for interdepartmental review. No concerns or objection were received. September eighth, twenty-twenty-one, staff spoke with Peggy Bussin regard- regarding, uh, the requested use. There are, um, the applicant is proposing to illuminate the first sign at the entrance. Staff has not received any concern from them, um, any concern or complaint regarding the requested use. Staff recommend approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-one fifty-three with six conditions.
Thank you. Questions on this one?
Uh, I have one.
Go ahead.
I, I'm kind of curious about how the sign is to be lit.
Um, it will be, uh, for, um, through the solar energy system.
But I mean, what kind of display? Is this going to be, uh, is it going to simply be putting lights to that particular sign? Will it be an electric sign?
Oh, it will be just the light to the, uh, the sign.
Simply display, uh, lights onto that existing sign?
Yes.
Further questions?
I'll just make a note, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Probably the, uh, closest building of any significance is the, uh, former Best Western Motel, which is, is currently closed, but they're really, there might be residents within fifteen hundred feet, but, uh, you wouldn't see it from where the signs at.
Well, I think it's legitimate considering it's, uh, on the way to Mount Rushmore. It's, uh, it's clearly a commercial sort of environment, so, yeah. But, uh, no, that seems to be very reasonable. The, uh-
Further questions? I did have a speaker request form, um, for, uh, Pinky Bussy. Do you actually want to speak if there's no questions or?
If you have no questions, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-one dash fifty-three with six conditions. Is there a motion? So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item thirteen.
Uh, Chrisack Environmental Planner. Item thirteen is layout plan L, or LPL twenty-one dash fifty-five. It is to create lot one of Eckert subdivision. The applicant is Roger and Kathy Eckert. The agent is Fisk Land Surveying. Janelle's in the audience if there's any questions. Uh, the location of the property is point four-six miles east of the intersection of Nekyo Road and Hidden Valley Trail. The size of the current property is approximately eighty-point-zero-five acres and is currently zoned agriculture district and vacant of any structures and accesses off of Nekyo Road. Uh, currently as the property sits, the property is vacant of any structure and there is no onsite wastewater treatment system. Uh, proposed lot one will be three-point-two-eight acres and is currently vacant of any structures. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. Uh, there were no major comments or concerns that were received. County Highway Department says that an approach permit is required for lot one and the, uh, the unplanted balance that remains. Uh, there were no other comments or concerns. Uh, rezone RG twenty-one dash twenty-five will be heard on the next agenda item, and it'll rezone the property from agriculture district to rural residential district. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request. Says it appears to be in harmony with the existing lots and the current land uses in the area. So staff is recommending approval of layout plan LPL twenty-one dash fifty-five with conditions. However, staff would, um, recommend to strike condition two and number six as they were for a different request and should have been struck from, from the report.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So, no legal access to the property?
That, so the no legal access is the, that they don't have an approach permit to get onto the property. Once they apply for the approach permit through county highway, there'll be legal access.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Once, once they apply for an approach permit through county highway, the legal access will be taken, taken care of. They just don't have an approach permit for that lot.
I see, I see. And then it indicates that, um, the approval of this layout plan is not a constitute approval of any further application. So this is just the beginning?
Yeah, so the layout plan's the first step. It'll go on to, I believe this will be a preliminary plat. So that'll be the next step. That condition just says, just because this request was approved doesn't mean the next one will be.
I see. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Um, I'm with Sandra on the legal access. I thought we'd have to have a condition for that because they thought we couldn't approve things for property, even a plat, maybe I'm wrong, without legal access being in place.
So we, we can add the condition that prior to the plat being filed, that registered, if they, um, uh, give, get an approved approach permit. I talked to Janelle about it last week and they were going to apply with county highway for the approach permit.
Yeah, I know Janelle knows. I'm just saying from a, a logistics point of view, whether it should be in there when we approve this today.
It's the layout plan, so i- if you wanted to add it to that, it, this is a preliminary step. It's, it's essentially staff's way of vetting out all of the things that need to happen to make this thing run through the system. So I'm assuming that once this comes back as a preliminary plat, they're going to have a approach permit in hand and, and at that point it would be taken care of. But Janelle, do you have something to add to that?
Um, yes. Good morning, Janelle Fink here on behalf of the Eckerts. I don't want to point out that there's an existing approach already there.
There is one there.
Yeah. This is one of the probably hundreds of existing approaches that the county just doesn't happen to have a record of. So we will apply for the permit and don't anticipate that we're going to have issues with it, but.
As long as there's approach here, I, because I understood under state law, you can't do things to property or prove things with property without, uh, some sort of legal access or access to it.
Right. And the configuration of the lot and the flagpole portion is specific to the location of the approach. And we're going to provide an easement so that you can access the balance of the property as well as this proposed lot in one location and not need an additional approach.
Thank you, Janelle.
Further questions?
Move to proof, staff's recommendations.
Second.
Motion and second, um, for approval, further discussion. I do want to make sure that no one else in the audience wishes to speak on this item. Noting none, uh, staff recommends approval of layout plan twenty-one fifty-five, motion and second. Um, all those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item fourteen.
Item fourteen is rezone RG twenty-one dash twenty-five. It is to rezone three-point-two-eight acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant is Roger and Kathy Eckert. Uh, Fisk Land Surveying is the agent. Again, Janelle's in the audience if there's any questions. Uh, the location of the property is near the intersection of Nekyo Road and Hidden Valley Trail. The size of the property being rezoned, it will be, or the portion that will be rezoned is three-point-two-eight acres. And it's currently zoned agriculture district and is vacant of any structures. When looking at rezones, we review current zoning within one-half mile. And currently within one-half mile, there is rural residential districts, suburban residential district, agriculture district, open space, and highway service district. We also look at the future land use within one-half mile. And the future land use within one-half mile, there's suburban residential district, rural residential district, ranchette district, agriculture district, open space, plan unit development, and highway service district. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. As for the property, current zoning and future land use in the area identifies the subject property and several parcels as rural residential district within one-half mile. Uh, therefore, the applicant's request to rezone appears to be in harmony with the current zoning in the area and the county's comprehensive plan. So staff is recommending approval of rezone RG twenty-one dash twenty-five.
Questions on the rezone?
Just one.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I really still could use a color key because I actually do try to read these things and go through them. And when the document supporting it is a picture here, it sure would be nice to help me along and say the color key matches this. Otherwise, to me, I immediately read this and I saw one lonely lot in the middle and I didn't understand it. But I understand what you're coming from on this now and I don't have a problem, but a color key would be nice.
I noted that for items for staff late.
You always-
I, I noted that in the agenda when I, when I saw this because I know we've discussed it. So we'll, we'll bring it up here at the end of the meeting. Further questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none and seeing none, um, staff recommends approval of rezone RG twenty-one dash twenty-five. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
And just so, I'm not losing my brain, did we already have a motion for approval of this? Or was that just it?
That was-
Thank, thank you. Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item fifteen.
Item fifteen is layout plan LPL twenty-one dash fifty-three. It is to create lots one and two of Stormhill subdivision number two. The applicant and landowner is Detliff and Connie Pouch. Fisk Land Surveying is the agent. Again, Janelle's in the audience if there are any questions. The location of the property is at two-three-nine-eight-four Palmer Gulch Road, involves twelve-point-two-two acres. And current land use is residential. Access is off Palmer Gulch Road and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Currently as the property sits, there is a single-family residence that was built in nineteen eighty-four and a four-hundred-and-thirty-two square foot tool shed that was also built in nineteen eighty-four and a twenty-four-by-thirty-two detached garage that has a proper building permit. And there is, they are current on their onsite wastewater treatment system. For the proposed lot, lot one will be nine-point-eight-seven acres and will contain all the structures in the septic system that was listed above. Lot two will be two-point-three-five-eight, point, two-point-three-five acres and will be vacant of any structures. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. The only major comment and concern that was received was from the highway department. And they stated that Palmer Gulch needs to be improved to ordinance fourteen standards, beginning at the intersection just north of the railroad tracks to the south section line. Uh, turnaround needs to be built in accordance with table one of the Pennington County subdivision regulation ordinances. Uh, that was made a condition. Uh, purgulation, test and profile hole information and dead or, and dedication to the section line right away will be required, uh, for lot two. I believe that they have applied for those. Uh, rezone or lot size variance is required. And then staff finds no significant issues with applicant's request. Says it appears to be in harmony with the existing lots and current land uses in the area. So staff is recommending approval of layout plan LPL twenty-one dash fifty-three with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on item fifteen? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL twenty-one dash fifty-three with eleven conditions. Is there a motion?
Move to proof.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item sixteen.
Item sixteen is layout plat LPL twenty-one dash fifty-four. It's a request to consolidate two lots to create lot thirteen R of M Eggenberg subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Natalie Wheaton slash Wheaton Enterprises LLC. The location of the property is one-three-oh-two-nine Old Hill City Road. Access is off Old Hill City Road. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. Currently as the property sits, lot thirteen, uh, which is the lot to the left, has a single-family residence that was built in nineteen sixty-one, a five-hundred-and-forty-four square foot attached deck with proper building permits, and they are current on their onsite wastewater treatment system. And they applied for a variance to reduce the front yard setback from twenty-five feet to two feet for the existing deck and residence. Lot fourteen, uh, to the east, uh, is vacant of any structures. There is an onsite wastewater treatment system that serves the, the house though, that was, uh, done in twenty-twenty-one. For the proposed lot, lot 13R will be 1.72 acres and will contain the structures that are currently on the property. Uh, this was routed out for interdepartmental review. Uh, county highway came back and said an approach permit is required. Uh, there is a current approach on the property, it's just not recorded with county highway. A rezone or lot size variance will be required for lot 13R. Um, staff finds no significant, significant issues with applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, so staff is recommending approval of layout plan, LPL 21 dash 54 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Cody. In another words, where were you moving the internal line? Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
From your picture, I saw an extrude.
Yeah, they're uh, they're working on getting a vacation home rental, which requires a one acre minimum, um, so they're combining the lot so they can do the vacation home rental.
And that's a east-west line then?
It's the, the north, the, the middle-north-south line right here will be, so it'll combine these two lots into one.
Thank you.
Questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, staff recommends approval of layout plan, LPL 21 dash 54 with 11 conditions. Is there a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 17.
Item 17 is preliminary plat, PPL 21 dash 57. It is to subdivide to create lots D1, D2, and D3 of Johnson Estate subdivision. The applicant is Randall Peregrin. The landowner is Robert and Donna Peregrin, and the surveyor is Howland Surveying. Uh, the location is approximately 2.0 or 0.02 miles east of the intersection of West Highway 44 and Thunderhead Falls Road, involves 8.25 acres. Uh, current zoning is suburban residential district. Uh, existing land use is residential slash vacant, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, currently, as the property sits, the property is vacant, and there is no onsite wastewater treatment system. For the proposed lots, uh, lot D1 will be 4.193 acres and is vacant of any structures. Lot D2 is 2.028 acres and is vacant of any structures, and lot D3 is 2.051 acres and is vacant of any structures. This was routed out for interdepartmental review. Uh, there were no major comments or concerns that were received. On July 20th, 2021, the Board of Commissioners approved layout plan, LPL 21 dash uh, 54. Uh, when reviewing the plat, the plat has the wrong certificate for preliminary plat and final plat. Uh, the county, the county auditor note is wrong and will need to be changed. Um, and the proposed plat does not have a scale. The subdivision regulations require a scale of one inch equals 100 feet, and that'll need to be added prior to the final plat being submitted. Uh, for the purposes of the preliminary plat, find, staff finds no significant issues, and staff recommends approval of preliminary plat, PPL 21 dash 57 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions on this one?
Just one quick one. Cody, um, I see that it didn't meet 400.3, and I'm sorry, I didn't even catch it until now. Usually it's 400.1, is it?
400.3 is the preliminary plat.
Okay.
Um, there's different ones, and they don't meet it because of that note.
I understand, though. I try to look those up just when you throw those numbers in there. Thank you.
Further questions, go ahead.
Uh, Cody, now, what's the minimal lot size for low density?
For suburban residential district is 20,000 square feet.
20,000, that's the minimum?
Is minimum for the current zoning.
Low density.
Yep.
Additional questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, um, staff recommends approval of preliminary plat, PPL 21 dash 57 with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries, item 18.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thenson, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item number 18 is preliminary plat, 21 dash 56, to subdivide and create lots 2R and lots three through lot 11 of Sudbury Ranch subdivision. Landowner is Sudbury Ranch Land Holding LLC. Their surveyor is Dana Foreman of K L J. Location of the subject property is east of the intersection of Clydesdale Road and Sudbury Ranch Road. Access will be off Sudbury Ranch Road. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, there are two, two properties we're talking about here. The first property is 10.01 acres, the other is 92 acres. They're both currently zoned agriculture district and are vacant of any structures and utilities. Proposed lots, as you can see on the right-hand side of your screen, uh, lot 2R will be 11.082 acres and vacant. Lot three will be .254 acre, and that will be a proposed well lot for the subdivision. Lot four will be 11.166 acres. Lot five, 11.373 acres. Lot six, 10.472 acres. Lot seven, 10.498 acres. Lot eight, 10.662. Lot nine, 10.97. Lot 10 will be 10.712, and lot 11 will be 11.158 acres. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Emergency services did have a comment stating that they needed to uh, get an approved road name, and they have since done that, and that'll actually be heard at the, as the next agenda item. Uh, county highway also had multiple comments about the uh, road plans that were submitted by the applicant, and those will be addressed as a condition of approval. Register of deeds also had a comment stating that the plat heading needs to contain formerly language that gives a legal description of, of the new lots, or legal descriptions of the former lots that the new lots are coming out of, and that there is a duplicate register of deeds certificate on the plat that needs to be removed. Uh, staff's analysis of the request is that on August 4th of this year, the applicant did apply for a subdivision regulations variance to waive the requirement to submit percolation and profile hole information. They also applied for a variance to zoning in order to allow a lot size of less than 10 acres for the well lot in an agriculture district. Also applied for a road construction within a section line right-of-way, and emergency services did approve Sky Ridge Court as a road name uh, for the right-of-way label, currently labeled on the plat as Sudbury Ranch Court. And again, this will be heard as the next agenda item at this meeting. Uh, as of this report, the applicant's agent is working to provide the following, uh, prior to the September 21st Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, there will be conditions number 13 and 14 of layout plan 21 dash 41, which requires sureties, and also condition number nine, which requires proposed water system uh, submissions. Both of those under layout plan 2141 were required prior to Board of Commissioners approval. And with that, staff recommends approval of preliminary plat, 21 dash 56 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Jason, going forward, uh, I noticed that uh, the fire coordinator mentioned that uh, he wanted to know the source of water and uh, and uh, anything size of, on above-ground tank or below.
Correct.
What will the source of water be? What aquifer are we gonna be in? We gonna be in an aquifer on that?
Right, so that was condition number nine, and they're working to provide that to us now.
I just, uh, I know Drum mentioned to us earlier this year that south of this particular property, that the wells were drying out, and so I just want to make sure we've got some safety mechanisms uh, in the event that happens.
Sure. I know the applicant's agent is in the audience. Maybe you can speak to that a little bit better?
I'm Dana Foreman with K L J Engineers. Um, thanks for having me, Commissioners. Um, on that regard, the, the well has been completed, and uh, right now it's producing about 50 gallons per minute in the Madison.
Okay. How deep is it?
Uh, I think they are about 500 feet deep on that one. Um, but I'd have to look at the permit, but I think that's roughly what it is.
Yeah, that uh, just curious, you know, just want to make sure that as we subdivide, that we don't jeopardize the water source and other existing wells, that's, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jason, I got a question. You keep indicating that number nine will be, condition nine was the requirement for the water system information, but that says that it's the plat heading containing formerly language.
So condition number nine of the layout plan? Which if you look in that criteria reviewed?
Am I on the wrong item here?
So it's a table on page two of the criteria reviewed under layout plan.
I'm sorry, you're on, you're on, in the criteria reviewed table, item nine.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I was in the conditions. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
On your condition 15 with the fire folks, is that the, are you developing that, any information from your well? I guess you know what they're looking for, and comment on that if you'd like.
Yes, um, so it's the owner's intent to um, provide uh, storage tanks at each home, so each lot will have their own storage tank, and then each home will have their own fire suppression in, in the home. Um, but, these, these will be higher-end lots, and realizing that they're gonna be bumped into the, having to have fire suppression in the homes anyways, um, so it's the owner's intent and plan to have the well, a three-inch line that is sort of the main, and then from there serviced to each home, that'll then.
So then they'd create their own flows and pressures and whatnot? Is what you're saying, from there?
That's correct, yep.
So the people that would buy these from you, that's what they would include in their design for their home then?
That's right. They would have their own storage tank and fire suppression.
It's not a bad idea. Thank you.
Further questions for staff or the owner's agent? Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks.
Um, anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item?
I'm just wondering, 50 gallons a minute?
Please, please, please come up to the podium and state your name for the.
Simmons, I'm a member of the road district in that area, and we have a large number of concerns. Unfortunately, we only found out about this meeting last night, and the fact that this was going to be discussed. It's my information that that well is a lot deeper than 500 feet. Um, we are concerned too about the adequacy of the water supply um, in that area. Pine Grove supplies to everybody else out there, and, and they're tapped out, so to speak. They couldn't offer, offer Mr. Skiberg taps for this property, so he dug his own well. I'm wondering if 50 gallons a minute is enough to provide that area, much less fire suppression plans in that area too.
Um, I guess I would let the owner's agent answer that, that question with regards to, um, because I think that the 50 gallons per minute would, it would fill up their own storage tanks at their own houses, and then that would be used to provide the, the fire suppression at their homes.
Mm-hmm. We have questions too about the road and whatnot, which has not yet been discussed, and I don't know if you're gonna go on to do that, or.
If you want to go ahead and ask your questions about the road, we can take those.
This is the, first we're finding out about the extent to which he wants to alter the roads in our road district. We are a tiny little road district, um, consisting of three-quarters of a mile of gravel road. Um, his plans would increase that by 100% at least, and increase the number of residences in that area by 300% if all goes to plan. I know he's got various variance requests underway as well, which will be discussed next week, so, um, we will be there to address those, but um, the, the neighborhood has a large number of concerns about this whole uh, plan, and there's not been any communication from Mr. Skiberg to speak of, um, about this for his neighbors.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I got your last name Simmons?
Simmons.
What's your first name?
Lynn.
Lynn. And I do have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Um, what's the size of your road district right now? How many members?
Four residences.
Okay. And I would, I'm just making an assumption here, but do you know uh, the section 14 road standards that they would have to build to right now, whether they've applied for a variance from them or not? Do you know, have any idea what they are?
No, sir, I don't.
They're very extensive compared to what I'm in a road district, and we're nowhere near that level of construction, for instance, that's required. Um, do, would you see to join them as a road district? Is that where you're headed with this?
Well, I'd rather not, frankly, but if.
Okay.
I imagine that he's gonna ask to join us, because we're in place, and the access to his property is via our road, and I don't think he has plans to access it from another primary site.
So it's the other way around, is you think it's gonna, the request will come because you're already in existence with the county?
Right, right. Our road district is, and the property that he purchased is, that property is within our road district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Now, Jason, this plat, would that have notes on it like the ones at Mountain Meadow where we're having all the problems?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Jason, can you speak to the road district item, the access through or to this property via another road district? Is that?
Correct. Um, as Ms. Simmons mentioned, this property is within that road district. Uh, if you look here on the screen, wait, it's purple, yeah, this purple area here, these are the subject properties. Here and here. So you can see they are, they are within the, the road district there, uh, the Sudbury Ranch road district.
So by definition, they're already in the road district.
They are.
That property is part of that road district.
Right, so condition number 12 states that at the time of submission of the, the final plat, the road district is amended to include the new roads in the subdivision, and a resolution be approved by the Board of Commissioners for maintenance of roads within the subdivision.
So they're already there. The, the property is, is it?
The property is within that road tax district, correct.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are the roads paved or asphalted, or are they gravel?
Gravel.
Gravel.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Can I ask one of our members who might know the answer to this? Uh, does it, do the Commissioners still approve uh, road districts separately, where in other words, this gentleman could apply for his own road district and while theirs exists already? In other words, there's one out, I'm thinking near Rushmore, uh, the Rushmore one has about four of them connected together, the Rushmore Development, that housing development that's been somewhat of a difficulty, and there's about four different road districts involved in that one. Could this happen in this case? Were the gentlemen that.
You don't have the answer to that?
Company that's applying?
I used to know the answer. I worked with road districts when I was in the Auditor's Office.
Thank you.
Um, they would have, and I don't know if it's legal anymore, they would have to be de-annexed from the current road district to form their own, but I don't know if that's possible, because there were some problems years ago with.
Right.
With lots that de-annexed and then created problems with districts that had loans.
Well, that, that's what I was getting at, Karen, the, the four that I remembered, the, the last one only had like about seven members, and they didn't want to deal with the other three in front of them, which meant they didn't have to give them a dime for snow removal or anything else. And that's where I thought we were gonna cut that off, so that it didn't happen again. So you're thinking they might have done that.
I think they might have changed that through the legislature, but I'm not positive.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, wouldn't there be some advantage in having a road district that is larger, including more road members? I mean, what would be the disadvantage to them joining this? They will bring seven new lots, or presumably, or whatever.
Maybe Ms. Simmons maybe will answer that?
Okay.
To my, our mind, this is a suburb in the middle of our ranch property, you know? Um, I think one consideration that you need to bear in mind is that Neck Yoke, which is the access to all of this area, is reaching capacity, if not already beyond, uh, to my mind. So there are a number of properties across the meadow over at Morgan Court that have been recently sold but not built on. There are presumably nine more here. That's 18 to 27 more cars per day, you know, down Neck Yoke. So another consideration, you know, I mean, he's meeting his list of requirements, but I'm not sure the road. know, I mean, he's meeting his list of requirements, but I'm not sure the road can, you know, meet the, meet the need frankly. With respect to covenances, which I know that you don't address, there are fairly strict covenants regarding the destruction of trees, of which there are many on this property. And in order to extend the road on the section line, which is heavily wooded, he's going to have to destroy hundreds of trees, which is of concern too.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just wanted to throw in a comment here. I would see great difficulty in establishing a homeowner fee as a board of trustee on a road district where one section of it is built to section fourteen standards and the other one is, is like our normal road district. Our normal road districts only run 12 to 16 feet wide and, and I mean, people still take good care of them, but it still would seem to me that if you had some members with a different road from others, it would be very difficult to develop a good workable plan for the people. But that's my own, and I sit on one. It would be really tough.
Further questions on this item? Looks like we have another person in the audience. Come on up. And then I did see your hand too. You can go next. State your name for the record.
My name is Maureen Schlichty. I am a neighbor of Lynn's and I just want to concur in support of what she said.
That's it?
Thank you.
Any questions?
I couldn't understand what she said.
My name is Maureen Schlichty. I'm a neighbor of Lynn's out in the area and I just want to concur in support of what she said today. And other neighbors also have concerns as well. We'd like to have clarity and understanding of what's proposed so we know there'll be a meeting next week. Many, many questions.
Okay. Thank you.
One last question for Jason.
Go ahead.
In this case, and this is just a what-if, there is no way when we develop a piece of property that we could ask that developer to pick up and make the road match the other, right? I don't see any way under our rules.
That'd be up to the road district, I believe.
Okay. After we got out of it, in other words, we, if it was approved, then it'd be up to them to figure out what, thank you, because they are a separate government and it.
Correct.
Okay. But we can't do it in our conditions or rules. I don't see any way.
No, it's really up to the road district what construction standards they want them to meet.
Thank you.
I think Karen has a.
I have a question. Is Neck Yoke a county road?
Yes.
It is. Okay. So, probably we need to talk to commissioners about that.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, it seems to me the die was cast some time ago. This whole area has continued to grow and grow and grow and grow. And I, you know, I remember when I was much, much younger, this was sort of an idyllic retreat, close to Rapid City, but of much different nature than an urban environment. That, that has changed even now. And there are lots of people, there are lots of lots out there. There's going to be a lot of development. And I think our focus, and I appreciate what these people are experiencing. I lived in Nemo Road for 25 years and fortunately, that was an area that never developed really, which was a blessing. But the reality was, it would be, when you live in an area where there is going to be development because it's desirable, we're going to have to deal with some of these issues. And simply saying that we're going to exclude people because they bring more population, more density, is, I don't think a very viable approach. We should be saying, how can we provide infrastructure that will make this a good experience for everyone? And it will not be what it has been because time takes its toll. And so, I share and sympathize with the people who are trying to retain what they, what they came for, but I also, as I say, I think the die has been cast a long time ago with, many people will perhaps want to leave this area. When they do, their property values will have escalated up. They will leave with a profit, an impressive one probably, but that part of Christ you pay for that is this kind of development. And it's, it's, it's a curse of time and circumstance. So, I, I am inclined to endorse the march of time, I guess, here and, and support this kind of application in general. But I, I want people to know that we face this issue repeatedly and we understand the frustration. But in many ways, there's little, some, some things we can do, but we cannot, I don't think, stop it. So, that probably doesn't advance the, the argument much, but I do feel strongly about this because this is not the only case. This comes up repeatedly. Almost every issue that we face is along these lines. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, just so that the folks know that James and Ann Maloney, that we did receive their objection to this. And I wanted to note for the record that the submission, because these folks were concerned about the 10-acre minimum, that this proposal does exceed the 10-acre minimum. I just wanted to make sure that these folks know that we do see these things and consider them. Thank you.
Noted. I believe that you were going to come up and speak.
My name's Ashley Berry. I'm the first house. So, I'm 13928. Lynn is the, is like right on the cusp of this at 13916. We all knew this was coming, like you said. We know that that part of the road exists and we're not in denial that there would be houses there. So, we're accepting of new neighbors and people coming to the area with, you know, in this meeting, I'm agreeing to this whole, like, planning thing. But what I gather is the goal here would be to have like, like you were saying, resort style. The reason, like, if you zoom out, everybody around, there's not going to be, what they're, sorry, let me go right to my point. What they're overlooking and what is not being said here is he has a request to put quarter acre lots on lot two, and that's coming up next week. And that's what we are all aware of as a community. This road was kind of an afterthought thing that we became aware of later, but now it's all kind of coming together. So, in our minds, these lots are going to happen. We understand it. We're welcoming of new neighbors and we are not going to try to make a big mistake because we understand development needs to happen. I think the struggle here is that they're chipping away and getting one thing approved and then another thing approved. So, lot two, instead of being whatever 10.11, whatever acres it is, is now going to be tried to chopped up into quarter acre lots. And I think that, the writing on the wall for that is our concern. So, it's not just 11 new neighbors, just, which is a shock to our systems, but we can, we can palette that. I think the possibility, because on the flip side, there's more sales being happening. I mean, I know you guys are aware that there's more things being sold in that general vicinity and it's all going to blow up right there. So, the precedent here is being set for what the lot size can be. And you're surrounded by people who have fought this forever. I know there was a geological survey done across the road for septic and they ruled many years ago, but there's a geological survey saying that they can't, they can't sustain the septic load across the street for less than 10-acre lots. So, here you are right across the street saying, oh, we're going to do 10-acre lots, but side note, we have a request in to put quarter acre lots. So, even if they're like, no quarter acre lots, but it's five acres, you're still chipping away. And at what point are you going to uphold the integrity of the area? So, I think it's not necessarily being in denial that there's going to be growth. It's, it's doing it in the way that maintains the, the integrity of the area. I mean, we're not as close as to where we're terraced all of a sudden, you know? I mean, I think, I think it will gradually go there, but the people who live there right now, there's a large group of us that all have the same feelings and nobody was aware of this meeting. So, I mean, I feel like you're going to get a tidal wave of people that weren't aware that this exact thing was going to be talked about, that are thinking that Tuesday's meeting is where it's at. So, I'm probably not the best spokesperson. Like I said, I'm green on this. I don't have all the codes and everything in place. But from my perspective and everybody else that isn't here right now that I know feels the same as me, we'd at least like to see that you maintain the lot size integrity before you approve more growth, that it's going to just be chipped away at, like, oh, well, we've approved a road. So, well, what's, what is it to just reduce a few lot sizes? Because that all of a sudden is going to be a main concern for that turn at Neck Yoke. It's a blind turn. If you've ever been there, it's, I mean, you can get nailed quick. People pop up that hill. It's really blind. There's a school bus stop there. So, they have to address those things. I think Gail at the Fire Department could have more concerns and maybe more in-depth insight into the water situation that hasn't been spoken to. So, if anything, I feel like some more research should be done before you just assume that growth is inevitable and, and go forward. You know, I, I think there's a lot at stake here and I think you need to look at every proposal for, for change before you approve one change. Look at the whole picture of everything that's been proposed for this area, understanding that it could be a ball you're rolling downhill, like that is, well, this was approved, so we can't really stop it. So, you know, you've got the whole picture to look at before this goes through. Because we're not opposed to neighbors. We're opposed to our quality of life being degraded from, I mean, 10-acre lots to quarter acre lots is seriously significant.
Yeah. No, I appreciate what you're saying and I think you've touched on something that this process takes place over a long period of time.
Mm-hmm.
Who knows? By the time we're all gone here, there may be quarter acre lots out there.
Right.
But the reality is, we don't want to see that happen now. And I, I think that's reasonable and I understand exactly how you feel. And I think you're wise in recognizing that we need infrastructure support from the county to make the experience of living there in terms of roads and water and et cetera attractive for everyone. And so, I would not be, at least on the face of it, in favor of these quarter acre lots by any means.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
But the quarter acre lot is the lot we, we require for the well lot. Is that not correct?
That's what they're proposing, is the quarter acre.
Right.
Lot for a well lot.
It's basically, we ask the people to put these developments with a well lot. But I would concur on your, your statement here because I would, wondering whether we can add a condition in a land use issue, not a use, a property use issue, that requires them to at least meet and discuss about this road. That's my biggest concern at this time, that they're really running into a stalemate or a problem that develops for both groups of folks, the ones that already live there and the proposed development, because this road issue is a big one. When you're talking, going, there's no maintenance that's going to take place if they don't do a road district. And we're also talking a significant difference in the two types of road we're dealing with.
There are already a road district though, and the taxes from that parcel are already going to that road district, correct?
And they'll increases the, as houses are built and it's developed.
The valuation and the taxes on the properties will increase the portion of the road district due to that increase will still go back to the same road district, which they're already a part of.
Mr. Chair, that, that, that part I understand. What I'm saying is the new development being at a section 14 road type of development that we're going to require versus the, the old, how do you come up with, as a trustee, you've got to have three trustees. How do you come on, come up with a fair fee to address the properties involved? It's basically, all roads are 100% usable to anybody that has property along that road. And it's a, it would be a very difficult situation as a trustee. I'm just saying, I wouldn't care to be in that shoes myself. That was the only reason I'm wondering. I'm asking Jason, is that something that can be added? We used to add things where the people would meet before the next process occurred. And I realize this is a PPL.
Right.
And is that something that can happen?
I do have that in there as a condition of approval, that the road district be amended. So, that does more or less imply that this applicant meets with the road district.
They didn't took that up, did they? Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So, Jason, is it possible to add one more condition stating that these lots cannot be subdivided any further going into the future? Or they can't be subdivided any further going into a certain timeframe just to protect the integrity of the area?
I believe when this was initially proposed, he did want five acre lot sizes and then he realized that he did have a covenant that he was subject to for the 10-acre minimum lot size. So, I believe that is going to be all what binds him to that 10 acres and not subdividing further.
I'm just saying, what assurance do the neighbors have knowing that these lots, 10 years, 15 years down the road, then another commission says, well, we need, we need more sites. And they say, no, if you have three acres, well, then you can take one of those 10 acres and you got three lots. And I think this is that lady's concern. I think we, there should be a mechanism there, whatever it is, to make sure that this, we do save the integrity of that area.
Oh, like I said, the covenants protected them this time. I mean, they got 10-acre minimum lot sizes. That's what they have. That's what the applicant is proposing now, between 10 and 11 acres. So, you know, originally, he did propose five acres. The covenants caught that and now he's subject to the 10-acre minimum lot size. So, I believe they worked. Now, I believe that they'll work in the future for that. But as far as anything that we add conditionally, I don't think that we can do that other than our zoning because this is proposed to remain agriculture district, which requires a 10-acre minimum lot size. So, in that regard, I think that we could control that. You could control that as the Board of Commissioners by not allowing any rezones to happen for lesser lot sizes.
We actually requested as little as three acre lots. Part of our concern is, the notice in the paper, which is what we had access to, did not specify that that well lot would be the only quarter acre lot there.
Okay.
Okay. So, a lot of hubbub about that. That being said, if this variance is granted to allow him that very small lot for the well, what's, what's to, you know, I just want the language to be specific enough that that is the only quarter acre lot and that there's no slippery slope allowing additional subdivision.
And that will happen on the 21st at the Board of Adjustment meeting. When that variance is brought forth, it will be specifically for that lot. And any other future subdivision will have to receive their own variance.
We have the state's attorney too to respond.
Megan Crager with the state's attorney's office. As Jason had mentioned, I don't believe that we can by condition require that, but as long as their covenants have that requirement, there's no way that they're ever going to be able to have less than 10 acre lots. And that will be a requirement that if they ever try to do that, they could have a civil suit against each other to go after them for the breaking of the covenants. Thank you.
Further questions? Does, does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Did I see a hand? Go ahead and come up again.
Maureen Schlichty, again, I just have a question to the, Charlie, the commissioner. When you said that you require the 2.4 acres for the well or?
We asked that of developers to signify and lay out for a, usually a well type of thing as a separate.
But if they don't, what if, what if they just leave the well? And is that absolute? 100% you must have 2.4 acres?
I don't know. We've seen it where they're supplying joint water. We tend to see it as a separate lot.
So, so it's not an absolute that it needs to be done?
Not that I know of. It's not absolute.
Thank you.
And the reason for splitting the well lot out is, is that we have a lot of instances where the, the well ends up being on someone else's property. Neighbors learn not to like each other. Then all of a sudden, you have somebody that owns the well that is supplying water to other people and you can imagine how things spiral out from there. So, it's important that it's, it's split out. That's the reason.
Thank you.
Further questions? Go ahead.
This is more of an educational thing for me, but, um, from my experience, I have close contact with another situation, I'm not directly involved, that where covenants are what's being relied upon to solve this other issue, and basically, what's been said is covenants, you could like rip them up and throw them apart, because now they're all having to sue each other, even though they're friends, to get this accomplished. And I see people writing this off as, oh, the covenants will protect you, when I've seen multiple times when covenants don't protect you, and I think that's our biggest concern, is that sitting back and saying, well, the covenants say this, like, well, well, as it was planned, there's nothing in place that, that makes sure that the quality, I mean, you could take this as far not to be dramatic, as down to sixteen, where there's multiple accidents per year. I mean, this becomes an, an infrastructure thing, like you were saying, depending on how many people you allow to access this neighborhood, you know, it could go all the way down to seventy-nine, and are people gonna be taking the little tiny Clydesdale Road to get all the way around the backside of Hart Ranch? You know, I mean, at what point do you end this road and make multiple entrances into this, you know? You know, that whole thing will be houses, but I think our concern is that our road is the entrance to all of those houses. I think what we're here for is that we could have a neighborhood, we could have quality of life bec, without becoming a highway, um, you know, because that's the writing we see on the wall, is where does it end? Because that road will continue, um, more houses will develop, you'll have another meeting for another ten houses, and at that point, you'll have probably another fight to break it down into five acre lots, because it's far enough away from the people who squawked the first time. So, I'm just trying to make it known that I don't feel comfortable with covenants protecting us, and if there's anything you can do to keep the integrity of the area while building, cause we're not, you know, we're not dense and think that there's gonna be no neighbors and no growth. We're, we're open to neighbors and growth, it's just making sure that we plan in a way that keeps the quality of life there, and potentially open to other access points for further down the road houses. So, I think, I guess that's our concern, and I, I don't trust covenants, and I, I just needed to add that, so.
Mr. Chair, can I reply to that?
Go ahead, Charlie.
I live in a covenant piece of property. Covenant's been on it for fifty years. Twice to the Supreme Court, we have someone that subdivided. The mere mention in the covenants about that no owner had a right to subdivide, and they did it without permission. It has been twice to the Supreme Court, the gentleman that subdivided hasn't lived in his place for twenty-five years. So, I assure you, judges do take covenants serious. And if you put it in the covenants, yes, somebody has to stand up. If you look the other way, and then the next person that does it, you don't look the other way, no judge is gonna consider you very strong at your commitment to the covenants.
Right.
But covenants do protect you, and they need to be renewed. Ours are looking finally at fifty years, I don't know how we ever got them fifty years in the first place.
Mm-hmm.
They're twenty-five now, is what they go by. They have to be renewed, but people just don't dive off the end of the planet at the end of twenty-five years either. But I, I would tell you that I would have some confidence in covenants, if they mentioned do not subdivide, you're not going to be allowed to subdivide below ten acres.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason we don't get involved with that is because that's the type of rules we can't put in conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, just in response to that, I think what happens, and I've lived in an area where we had covenants, and the reality is, is that people have covenants, but they're sort of like a community that has a police force, or has crime, but they don't wanna pay for the police force. Because covenants require, oftentimes, in the circumstances that Charlie noted, that you have to reach into your pocket and hire an attorney, and go to court, and enforce them. And if you do that, it's amazing how compliant your neighbors can become. But if everybody complains and says, oh, I, I, I'm not gonna spend a thousand dollars to help this lawsuit against my neighbor down the road, then the covenant becomes useless. I mean, it's, it's, it's like a muscle, it has to be exercised.
Right.
If it's not exercised, it's, you know, it's not effective.
Well, that helps. I just, you know, if there's anything else that we can do as a neighborhood to, to help protect the integrity, I think that's what we're after, and if, if covenants are our only resource, it's at least good to know where we land, I think, and making sure that our concerns are known going forward, knowing that this is kind of a, a small road, Neck Yoke isn't wide or has shoulders, it's, could become increasingly more dangerous as people are exercising, there's already people running, and people worry, I worry every day that, you know, someone's gonna pop out from, so, there's things that add up to more traffic on that side. So, I think making this become a, a bit of a highway is, is our concern, and we just wanted to let that be known, so.
Thank you for your comments. Further questions? Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, um, staff does recommend approval of preliminary plat PPL twenty-one dash fifty-six with nineteen conditions. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Nope, uh, the one no. Um, motion carries. Item nineteen.
Agenda item nineteen is a follow-on request to the previous heard agenda item. It is a proposed road naming of Sky Ridge Court. Pennington County Planning Department received a road naming application to name a future platted sixty-six foot wide right-of-way Sky Ridge Court. Staff found this to be an appropriate name for this right-of-way. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Emergency services did state that they approved Sky Ridge Court as an appropriate road name. There will be up to five future properties, uh, that will take access off of this proposed road. Again, this is the layout, or the preliminary plat that you just saw, highlighted in red is the proposed Sky Ridge Court. Staff recommends approval of the road name Sky Ridge Court with one condition, that the applicant will be responsible for payment and posting of a road name sign in accordance with the standards set forth by the Pennington County Highway Department.
Questions for staff?
Just one.
Go ahead, Charlie.
How does this all taper into the existing road district and the one, the new road construction we're talking about? Is, is this going to blend right in without creating any conflict?
Well, I believe that'll be between the road district and the applicant, once they sit down to amend that road district.
Whether they, what, what, if the existing road district has to accept this name, correct?
Correct. It was approved by County Highway and, uh, with your approval.
Okay.
It'll go to the board.
But they have some time to respond, uh, the road district, since they came to the meeting, I guess, I'm sure they wanna know.
I believe that they couldn't show up to the, uh, Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, that's all I'm trying to get at. Thank you.
Further questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, staff recommends approval of road name Sky Ridge Court, uh, with the following condition, that the applicant be responsible for payment and posting a road name sign in accordance with the standards set forth by Pennington County Highway Department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There you go. Motion and second for approval, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Item twenty.
Agenda item number twenty is layout plan twenty-one dash fifty-nine to reconfigure lot lines to create lot two R, less lot H two and H three of HES number five six three and lot one of JV subdivision. The applicant is Isaac Almanza, JV Gulch LLC, other affected landowner is Karen Murphy. Location of the properties are two-three-eight-zero-zero and two-three-seven-nine-zero, Highway three eighty-five. They are both currently zoned agriculture district, they're both currently used as residential properties. Access to both of them are off Highway three eighty-five, and there is floodway on the Lot two, less lot H two and H three is the property on the left, the smaller one here on the, uh, left-hand side of your screen. Does contain a single-family residence, a detached garage, a shed, and a garage addition, as well as an on-site wastewater treatment system. Larger property to the right is fifty-two-point-nine-nine acres, contains a single-family residence as well as multiple permits, such as a road construction within a section line, stormwater permit, uh, floodplain development permits, and an on-site wastewater treatment system. Proposed lot R, lot two R, less lots H two and H three will become five-point-six-five acres and contain all the previously discussed structures. Lot one of JV subdivision will be the larger parcel in green here on the right-hand side of your screen. It will become fifty-four-point-seven-four acres and will contain the, uh, structures and the permits previously discussed. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, there were no comments or concerns received. Staff's recommendation is that staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, this appears to be in harmony with harm, existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval of layout plan twenty-one dash fifty-nine with conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Is there any questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this one? Seeing none, um, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL twenty-one fifty-nine with eleven conditions, is there a motion?
Move to proof.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion?
Just, again, the same thing, I wanted to note that we did receive some correspondence in regard to this. From Maggie Espinoza, I believe in Holly Denton, does that sound correct?
Twenty-one.
I think those were for twenty-one.
Oh, is that for twenty-one?
Yes.
Oh, all right, my fat finger, hold up, sorry.
No problem. Further discussion? Noting none, um, got me off my game here, Charlie. Did we already have a motion?
I apologize.
Motion and approval.
Mr. Chair, you're correct, I apologize.
We had a motion.
Motion and second, we're on discussion. Noting no further discussion, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Now, we're on twenty-one.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, item twenty-one is rezone RZ twenty-one dash twenty-six to rezone six-point-six-eight acres from suburban residential to urban residential district. The applicant is Pink Cabin LLC, the agent is KTM Design. Um, this property does contain a remaining balance, uh, so this is actually the six-point acres, it's up in the northwest corner of that property there along Colvin Street. Um, however, the, oh, this location is within the Murphy Ranch subdivision, um, this is flat, it's currently zoned suburban residential district, um, it is residential and vacant. There is no special flood hazard area on the property, and the access to this is off of Longview Road. Um, staff is recommending that we continue this rezone to the September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one meeting, Planning Commission meeting, in order to resend out notices. Uh, the notices were sent out based upon property on the east side and not on the west side. So, we will have to continue this. We have received several items of concern on this property, and I think they got two more this morning. So.
Um, with that being said, uh, I'm gonna take some liberty here. Those folks in the audience, who's here to speak on this item? One, two, three, four, five? So, the recommendation from staff is to move this item, um, to the September twenty-seventh Planning Commission meeting, um, and so this will likely be continued until that meeting. Um, we've received, uh, numerous, uh, responses, uh, and objections on, on this item. Um, it'll be reheard on that day. Because you're here, I, I wanna respect your time, you know, you've been sitting here, do, do you guys wanna comment today, or, or do you, would you rather wait and hold your comments, uh, till the next meeting?
I have questions.
You have questions? Okay. I'd like, I'd like to get those answers answered, then. Go ahead and come up.
Yes, my primary question is, what is the endgame? What are they wanting to accomplish in the long term? I mean, this is just a rezoning proposal, but what does that allow?
Okay.
That isn't currently allowed, and what are they hoping to do with that?
And your name, sir?
My name is Scott Lewis.
Okay. Um, I don't know if the, if there's proposals at staff's level currently at this time or not.
No, all we know at this time is to allow multifamily residential.
Okay. So, the intent is to rezone it to urban in hopes of doing multifamily residential?
Correct.
Okay. That's all we have at this time.
Do we have any idea if there's any caps on the size of those multifamilies?
So, the proposal is to rezone it, and the zoning then would zone, zoning then, uh, controls the size of the lots and how that property can be developed. So, I would refer you to staff or the current zoning requirements, um, for, this was urban, right? So, if you, if you looked that up, you'd be able to understand what the rules would be for them, once it was rezoned.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I would, uh, remind the audience that we do have a website that you can go to, it's at penkold.org, and if you want the other four commissioners to hear what I'm hearing today, I would suggest you use that website. Uh, it's pretty effective for, you know, when you got a good cause like this.
If there's other questions, go ahead, sir, please come up.
I am Brandon Jensen, I am the president of the road district that maintains this area. Um, biggest concerns I have is, is that is a crossed creek area. You can see on the bottom part of that, that is the road and bulk box culvert they'll be placing over the road, so every single car or person that lives in the area will have to travel the one road into the neighborhood and back out through everybody else's houses. So, if it is becoming townhomes, apartments, whatever else they wanna produce in there with multifamily homes, that is that much more extra traffic that has to travel through our neighborhood to get back out to Longview.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, with that being said, under a hypothetical situation that they did multiple, Britney, who would have the final say on a building permit if we felt that that could be detrimental to the general public relative to the high density and the condition of the road?
The approach permit would have to be approved by the road district, cause that is within the road district boundaries. Um, so, the board would just, the planning commission would look at as far as, um, whether or not this is appropriate for urban residential, as far as approval of the building permit, we would have to have an approach permit in place in order to approve the building permit.
Would that be, is that within the three-mile limit?
It is, and this is being plotted through the three-mile planning jurisdiction, however, the zoning and the building permits go through our office.
Okay.
I have a question for Brittany.
Go ahead.
When I look in the, the zoning ordinance for multiple family dwelling, it says a structure designed for use, designed or used for residential occupancy by two or more families living independent of each other. Um, it doesn't have a maximum, it has just a minimum, two families or more living independently of each other.
Right, so if you look in the urban residential, um, district, they have a density requirement, so multiple family, oh, maximum of sixteen multiple family dwellings per one acre. So, that would be the maximum, it would be under the zoning district. Um, there are parking requirements, even though that the zoning would allow, uh, multiple family, we do have a separate section in our ordinance under multifamily, so they would still have to meet all that basic criteria of the multifamily in order to get their building permit.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask her another question. Very good. So, what, how big a, um, multifamily structure could one build? You couldn't build a ten-story building, could you?
No, the maximum is still thirty-five feet, so if they wanted to go over thirty-five feet in height.
Two stories?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, well, I, and that's what I was trying to do, is get some sense of how much density we're talking about if this were to be approved, uh, but that gives me some guidance then. Okay.
Further questions for Mr. Jensen?
I didn't get your gentleman's name?
Brandon, Brandon Jensen.
Okay, thank you, Brandon.
Yep, otherwise, just like I said, I mean, just that density of people, the possibility of other things, we're already single-family homes all in there, do we really want to go beyond and start adding multifamily homes to our neighborhood and everything, and the neighborhood's only gonna grow anymore, so.
Cool.
Yes, you have any other questions yet?
No, thank you for your comments. No, thank you for your comments. Did anyone else want to speak on this?
Hi, Nick Kill the brand. Just had some concerns, definitely with the road district. There isn't a lot of access coming through there. They've already built three or four more phases and they're continuing on. It's gonna cause so much more taxes and so much more damage to our roads coming in and out of there. Another question I had is, I'm looking at your guys' section 504 rezoning comprehensive. That they're supposed to notify us within 10 days. I heard you saying that you notified some people, not the rest. I think everybody in that subdivision needs to be notified. If everybody is gonna be affected by the road conditions, not just the east or west side, I think everybody in that subdivision should be notified. As well as per your regulations, a sign put out front. I haven't even seen anything on the news or anything about it being, letting us know. I just found out from my neighbors. I didn't receive anything. And I know that I would say 80 to 90% of that subdivision wasn't notified about this. We just know a bunch of people around the area and we were telling everybody about to try to get them to either email or come to this meeting.
Okay.
It seems kind of sneaky that, you know, not everybody was notified when it will affect that whole subdivision.
It sounds like only a certain portion were notified. That's the reason it's being continued. So they do follow the rules as far as what's required for the notification. Now with regards to everybody in the subdivision, I don't know if I can speak to that because normally there's a distance associated with what's required for the notification. And I don't know if some would fall in and out of that and where that line would be. Can you speak to that?
Yes, it's 500 feet. That's what's in our ordinance. So everyone within 500 feet of the outside boundary is notified. So there may be people on the eastern portion of that subdivision that wouldn't be notified.
But if he takes the line 500 feet from the east property line, everyone that encompasses that should be notified. Which should be a large portion of that.
Right. So initially, what was notified was the eastern portion. So there's 500 feet around there. That's why the people on the western portion weren't notified.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Should we be looking at adding, when they're on a road district, that kind of threw me for a curve too. If they're on a road district, certainly the people that are on the road district are interested people.
Are all gonna be affected. Everybody in that subdivision should be required.
Is that something down the road we can look at, Brittany?
Sure. And I think it's definitely that they could come here. We typically route our requests to the road district if we have an email or information.
Thank you.
And do you know if there's gonna be low-income housing put on there? I know you were saying you don't know at this time, but I've dealt with KTM before and I've, I know that they do a lot of low-income housing from time to time. And that's something I don't want in my neighborhood. I don't want statistically crime will go up. You're gonna have lots more traffic going through there. And it's a big concern for all the neighbors and the people in that community. So I just want to address my concerns with you guys all. I appreciate you.
Yes, thank you.
And we can certainly speak to KTM. I'm not sure if they have plans solidified if they're going to be fourplexes, duplexes or apartments at this time.
Gentlemen in the back had another comment. Is that right? Please come forward.
Well, comment I had is that I am the president of the road district and I never received an email, never received a letter, never anything. I only got it because the neighbors brought this to my attention.
Okay.
So like you're saying, that should have went to me for sure.
So what I'd like to do is, on your way out today, can you stop upstairs and make sure that you give your contact information to staff? So we can get that routed to you?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Further comments, questions? Okay, with that, staff recommends to continue rezone RZ 21-26 to the September 27th Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion and second to continue. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. I would, where are we at? 22? I would suggest maybe we take a
We have more.
Small recess? Five minutes, 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
10-minute recess, come back at five after? All right, we'll reconvene and start on item 22.
All right. Item 22 is ordinance amendment OA 21-12 for Pennington County to amend section 210 urban residential district. This is to update the section to allow for higher density development of single-family dwellings in the urban residential zoning district. If you look up on the screen, I actually have these in red and the different changes that we're looking at adding to the zoning district. We are looking at going to the minimum lot size down to 6,000 square feet. The preface for this is if you actually look in the suburban residential district, there is a density bonus. So you would have to go through the board of adjustment, get a variance for the density bonus to go down to the 6,000 square feet. When we looked at this zoning district, we actually looked at it more as allowing multifamily dwellings. So people could have multifamily dwellings without conditional use permits. So the reason for this change is that same kind of preface. So if you went to the zoning district, you wouldn't have to get all of these variances with the board of adjustment. That multiple family dwelling, that B, the minimum lot size, that actually comes from the section 303 that deals with multiple family dwellings. So that just concurs with those requirements that are in 303. So they're consistent. And then the other big change to it would be to allow a 20-foot setback on the front yard. Most of the more urban residential or these higher-density housing have what we call snout house type designs. So the garages are in the front and the living quarters are in the rear. So that 20-foot setback would mainly be to a garage and not living area. So that was a preface for that. And then again, under B, the multifamily dwelling, that would still remain the 25 feet. And then under the side yard for I, that actually, that exception comes out of section 303 for multifamily dwellings. So that is consistent. So those are the big changes under that district.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Brittany, would that be, would that mirror what Rapid City would have for setbacks and whatnot relative to that type of density?
Yes, that is consistent. They are allowing the 20-foot front yard setbacks for those higher-density homes.
Okay.
My only concern with that is people's trucks sometimes are longer than 20 feet. And will they, they park in their driveway? Will they, will the tailgate be out in the sidewalk? Right? There's no curb for them to drive up on top of like they do downtown.
Yeah.
But I understand the reason for standardizing these items to not require someone to come in and get 20 exceptions. So I appreciate the homework that you and your team have done to update these. Further questions for staff? Any questions?
I just had one. Especially now that we have somebody reviewing prints and things like that. Do they add in the overhang on the buildings or do they just go with the structure dimensions?
It's actually the structure dimensions in our section 309 softits are an exception. So we don't consider the overhangs or the softits. It's just to the structure.
And the city in some classes does add the overhang, I believe, don't they?
They may. I'm not.
And I think UBC does in some classes of construction. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I guess talking about extended trucks with long boxes, what, when we say two parking spots, what constitutes a parking spot? Eight by 20 or?
It's usually nine by 18, I believe. But the two-car garage, each place in the garage would be two parking places. So if they build a single-family residence with a two-car garage, that's their two parking spaces.
Thank you.
Further questions? Any proposed changes? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment OA 21-12 with the proposed changes. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. And so the, the person that is on Zoom is actually here for the next following ordinances. Is that correct? Believe so. All right, we're gonna keep moving forward. Item 23.
Item 23 is ordinance amendment OA 21-13, Pennington County to add section 325 marijuana ordinance definition of terms to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. To add this section to the Pennington County ordinance to define terms associated with marijuana businesses and licensing. This section would define all the terms used in sections 326, 327 and 328 pertaining to marijuana businesses and license. These terms have been taken out of either state administrative rules or state statutes. So they are consistent with what the state defines these terms as. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA 21-13.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Brittany, well, I assume this came from a template from another municipality?
No, actually, these came from the state, I believe. These are the state.
Okay, so we're, I was just trying to figure out how these originated. So it came from the state? Okay.
Yes, and we pulled all of these terms and made it one section because we didn't want to have to put these terms in front of every single of the section. So we just made it its own section.
And Megan Krueger for the state's attorney's office. Most, if not all of these terms came from the Department of Health's definitions of these terms, or they came directly from statute, which I think is 34. I can't remember off the top of my head. It's under the 34s. We did change just slightly some of the definitions because their definitions were specifically for medical marijuana. And instead of having to do two separate ordinances for medical versus recreational, if that ever does happen, we wanted to make our ordinances so that way it could be used as far as a land use and licensing point of view on either, either medical or recreational. So that way we're not having to recreate everything again if, when recreational is passed in South Dakota.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I think you've got a typo in number six, person licensed by, I think it should say the state of South Dakota. And then my second one's more complicated. In number eight, it goes marijuana and cannabis. It's, and we're dealing with definitions, and so that's why I brought it up. In its natural and unaltered state, except for drying or curing or crushing or crumbling. What the hell does that mean?
What the heck does that mean?
Yes, what the heck? Finally, I, you lot, when I started reading that, I'm going, wait a minute, natural and unaltered. And if it's got all these other things, it didn't make sense to me. Okay, go ahead.
And that is one of those definitions that we took straight out of state statute, which is why it is what it is. My guess is that they are trying to get at when marijuana is processed to be used either medically or recreationally, they have to dry it. And in some instances, they process it into different types of substances.
But it's still marijuana. So does, do those need to be in there? What my thought was, if you read that, all parts of any plant of the genus marijuana, whether growing or not, in its natural and could put altered state, period.
And I don't disagree with you, but there is a distinction between the marijuana flower and like tinctures, oils, those types of products, which I believe is covered under one of the other definitions.
Yeah.
Yeah, marijuana waste, item 11.
Is it number 11?
I think it does talk about those in one of the other ones, but I, oh, it's the number 11. Cannabis flower, trimmed cannabis seeds, marijuana waste. It explains those items. But I just, I couldn't understand why we wanted to, except for drying or curing or in crushing or crumbling. It's just, why not altered state? It's still marijuana if we alter it. Don't know. I'll leave it go. Thank you.
My, my question is along the same lines where it says all parts of any plant of the genus marijuana. So then, and later on in that same item, it says the term does not include the plant marijuana sativa L, period, or any part of that plant. So is it, is that plant specifically not in the same genus of marijuana?
No, so marijuana sativa L is different. I don't know exactly how different because I'm more on the legal side as opposed to understanding the plant itself. But my understanding from my experience being a prosecutor is that that is a different thing.
And these, these were taken from the state?
Correct.
Yes, they were.
Further questions on the definitions?
Mr. Chair, I guess, and I agree with you, what you read on there. I thought they were trying to talk about that separates the, what the people call the useful part, the hemp business from the non-legal marijuana business. But again, I still don't understand the need for drying, curing, crushing, crumbling.
I see at the very last sentence, they remove, or they qualify it by, with the amount of delta nine, tetrahydrocannabinol or whatever, it's called in it, so.
And that definition too, just so the board is aware, or the commission is aware, that definition is also in our state statute for criminal definitions. So it's actually in multiple places throughout the statutory framework. It's not only in the regulations, but it's also in the medical marijuana and it's also in our criminal statutes under section 22.
So the crumbled part, you could sprinkle on ice cream or not, or? Well, I'm just trying to understand.
I agree.
There are a multitude of products is what we've learned.
My thought was, if you exclude those and you leave altered, what if they come up with a new way to alter it? And I agree with you. They make it sprinkling for, for, you know, ice cream. I'm just saying, I don't think trying to be more specific helps the definition. Because you can just come up with another way. What if they come up with a way they do it? You know, I don't know. They use heat guns now and now they're gonna use something else.
Who could be smashed instead of crushed, I mean?
I don't know.
But I mean legally, it doesn't really make that big of a difference as far as, you know, the tinctures and it includes an all derivatives extracts, cannabinoids, isomers, acids, salts, salts of isomers. It pretty much includes every type of marijuana that exists and could exist. And as I said, it's not our definition. It actually comes from state statute.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Is there another way you could say that and reword it? So it is kind of confusing and if we're having troubles, you know, and somebody looks it up, just a normal layperson, I'm just thinking there might be a better way to word it, but still convey the same thought.
There is a way that I could word it where I would just refer the reader to the state statute. I do not feel comfortable from a legal standpoint, changing the definition from what has been defined at state level.
Okay, so this is right from the state here?
This is straight from the state.
Maybe there should be an addenda to explain it.
Can you put a clause in there such that if, if the state's definition Can, can you put a clause in there such that if, if the state's definition, you know, so maybe it would be the last part of item eight, where it would say, i-if the state's definition of this changes this, then this, the applicability of that? Or would you, would you just exclude that entire paragraph and specifically refer to the state statute instead?
So what I could do under eight is instead of adding the entire definition as it's defined in section twenty, or in chapter twenty-two, under the criminal code, essentially what I could do is C-section SDCL dash twenty-two, blah, 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 blah. And then anytime that criminal statute for the definition of marijuana, which is really the operative definition that most legal entities use, anytime that definition changes, then it would automatically change for our definition.
That makes sense to me.
I, I would, I would like, I, I guess I would be in favor of that, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I, I too would be in favor of that, but I, I do have to say that I still think it's well-defined in the rest of the paragraph without going into the little cursed munchin' there's of words. Somebody, you know, even in the legal profession, and God forbid I say this, they make errors too. And that's why we have courts and, and people disagree, so, thank you.
Further questions on the ordinance amendment language? As I understand it now, we have two changes. The first one is in item six, where we were going to put state of in front of South, in front of South Dakota. Second item is item eight, which will be reworded to indicate it will be defined as, as per state. Confide law.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add the language. Yes.
Okay. Further changes?
Move, we approve?
No, hold you on that.
Oh, do you want some more discussion from the audience?
Hold you on that one a little bit. There, there are people in the audience. Do you guys have any? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item before we move forward? Okay.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of ordinance amendment twenty-one dash thirteen with changes noted in the meeting. Further discussion?
I have to clarify, does it have to be continued to the twenty-seventh, or? If you're gonna have them all heard at the twenty-seventh again?
So what we could do is just have it approved with the changes, and then you guys could approve the final. So then that way, if there's any public comment on the changes that you guys made today, we can put that out there and, you know, so it's.
So we're not approving twenty-one dash thirteen, we're, we're simply recommending changes, and then we'll carry these forward to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Does that mean that we kinda advertise this as more than a one-reading type of thing for the planning commission? Is that what we're saying?
We did, just because if there was a numerous amount of changes, it gave the public the opportunity to come to the next meeting on the twenty-seventh and make comments towards if there were significant changes.
The reason I, I ask is, I think we can approve it, and then that's brought up at the next meeting, and that's also part of our minutes, now that we're approving it based upon a second reading. I will change my amendment to that.
Are we doing the same thing with twenty-one fourteen, too?
I would say we were gonna do the same for all of them, where we're gonna make changes, we'll make changes today. Those will then get reposted for the next meeting. And then, assuming there's no changes, I, I would suggest that we approve them at the next meeting.
Okay. Then my, then how do you want my motion worded?
I would reword your.
Yeah.
I don't know if we would actually, we would continue ordinance amendment twenty-one thirteen, then, would we not?
Yes, yes.
I move we continue ordinance twenty-one thirteen to?
September twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh meeting.
Right, and make the recommended changes.
And make the final recommendation at that time.
Who had the, who had the motion, or the second on the first motion?
Sandy did.
Sandy did?
Sandy.
Are you agreeable to that?
Yes.
Alright. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on to agenda item twenty-four.
Alright, item twenty-four is ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash fourteen for Pennington County to add section three twenty-six marijuana businesses to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. To add this section to the Pennington County zoning ordinance to establish a conditional use permit requirements for marijuana businesses operating in Pennington County. This section would establish the conditional use permit requirements for marijuana businesses operating in Pennington County. And staff is recommending approval of OA twenty-one dash fourteen.
Thank you. So why don't we take this section by section, and we'll start with the bullet point A. Does anyone have anything in A, which will be one through five?
I have a question on five F, would be five F. If you're going on eight? On the second page.
Yep, go ahead.
Five.
Okay, I, development standards, all marijuana businesses shall develop properties in harmony with surrounding area and shall enhance design elements of building properties accordingly. They're gonna be, have a lot of them will be existing facilities, or then we're talking about planting trees or something else that would, how do we view that? I thought it was vague, I wrote.
Right, and it, and it's meant to be because it just depends on what neighborhoods that they're in. You know, when we went and, you know, traveled and looked at other facilities in other areas, those facilities blended in with the neighborhood, so they weren't sticking out in comparison to the other architecture and the visual interest of the areas.
So just a point, if, if it's a building with a slab front, no, no landscape and parking spaces, as long as theirs is a slab front, no, we're okay.
Yeah, and then when you go to the next section under the development review, that will be part of the development review requirements. That's in the next ordinance section.
Okay.
I have a few questions.
Okay.
Five A, it says marijuana dispensary shall not be located within one thousand feet of another dispensary. Why? Why, why not, why not cluster them?
That was just, that's pretty common in other ordinances. I think that some neighborhoods didn't want, you know, several of them in one area. But in reviewing a lot of other ordinances, that, that was a very common requirement.
Okay, so that's kind of an, an adaptation of some multiple ones that are similar to that. And I don't have answers for these questions, I, I have a lot of whys, though. The next one is five C, and it says marijuana business shall not be located with one, within one hundred feet of, and then it lists items one through nine. And it goes back to the manufacturing facilities, where manufacturing facility is a marijuana business, right?
Yes.
So it talks about fired and hazardous materials with regards to manufacturing facilities, and, and I guess being ignorant of, of how some of the chemicals are, are stripped and processed in the, in the manufacturing of this, but it talks about hazardous materials, flammable gas, flammable liquefied gas, those types of things. I'm wondering if a hundred feet with regards to some of the items listed in C, one through nine, is adequate? I don't have the answer for that. It's a question that I would have, that, that, in my mind, it would be left to, you know, probably the fire marshal or whoever would have jurisdictional authority on, you know, if they were going to process it using this procedure. That then would limit, in my mind, it, what I'm saying is this one hundred feet may be dictated by other items further on. Is that a fair statement?
That is fair, and when you look at the manufacturing areas, they're in industrial zoning districts. Typically, industrial zoning districts don't abut residential areas or these types of uses, so that is one thing. Most of the manufacturing facilities use hexane, you know, their storage requirements, they'll have to go through the state fire marshal for things like that. Some use not chemicals, some do, it just depends on which type of facility, you know, they apply for.
Okay.
So, and, you know, the ones that we have seen, the storage facility and the amount of chemicals, I think, and the larger one that we saw wasn't a whole lot. I mean, there was probably, what, six or eight, maybe, containers? They were in a fenced area that was gated and locked, and they were chained to the, you know, I mean, there were some secure requirements. But they were in an industrial area also.
My next question is on five E, co-location, it says, where you have a dispensary and a cultivation facility, and they're located on the same site, in a commercial zone district, the cultivation facility shall be no more than twice the size of the dispensary. Why is that?
So, that was one of the ones that we had talked, taken out of another ordinance, and we had actually spoke to them about it. There was a facility where they actually do the cultivation in it, and then the dispensary is in the, the front of the building. So it was just a general requirement that they had had, that had worked for, for them.
I have another question on that same one, then, would that be, is that gonna be adequate to support the, the business if, if we limit the size of the cultivation area? I mean, the dispensary could, could safely be a pretty small area.
Right, but they don't necessarily just have to get it from that cultivation facility, they could get it from any facility or any manufacturer. Cause there's thousands of different types of products, and thousands of different types of flour and, and things, so they're probably not just going to get it from one type of facility.
Okay. Anything else on section A?
I've got a comment, and I can't find it in here now. Where does it say how many licenses can be issued?
It's in the next, it's in the last section, under licenses.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Five C, where it says, business shall not be located within a hundred feet. If we're looking at an application and we feel that that needs to be further, can we have the latitude to increase that to two hundred and fifty feet under certain circumstances?
I think it would be difficult to do that, given that our ordinance specifically lays out a number, and if we changed what they, if they had to be more than what our ordinance says, then we wouldn't be following our own ordinance. And that would probably raise some legal complications.
I think a hundred feet's not enough for, I would feel more comfortable with two hundred and fifty. A hundred feet are, that's four city lots. Or maybe in another neighborhood, it could just be one, one lot, a hundred-foot lot. So I, I would consider looking at that, maybe, I'm just thinking two fifty, but I think, I don't think a hundred's enough.
And that is certainly something that we could look at. I would caution the commission to be aware that if we zone out completely, if we basically don't allow, if the restrictions are so much that properties can't exist anywhere in the county, then we're effectively zoning out that use. And legally, that gets really touchy. Now, Brittany could take a look and see if we did do two hundred and fifty foot or two hundred foot, if that would effectively zone out that type of use in the county entirely. That I don't know, that's more of a planning issue. Part of the reason why we went with a hundred feet was because that was a number that we knew that there were going to be properties where businesses could buy and exist. The bigger your number gets, the less likely that a business is gonna be able to exist, and therefore more likely that the county will get in legal trouble.
I don't, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I would extend on that a little bit. I, wouldn't it be better for us to have two hundred and fifty feet there, if, if that is the preference? And allow a variance in, in a specific circumstance than it would be to have the smaller number there?
It's, it's certainly something that we could consider. As far as variances go, for a legal standpoint, they really should be the exception and not the rule.
Yeah, but for the two, for the, for the two items that, that you just discussed, I, I mean, if we came in and said, no, you can't, and, and this says a hundred, how does that compare to two hundred and fifty's the rule, but we'll allow it because you're two hundred and twenty feet? And, and, and all the other boxes are checked, and that gives the, the, the planning commission and the board the latitude to fully review that scenario and, and make that decision on, on a variance.
Yeah, and I think the issue with doing it via the variance is that it has to be a topographical issue on that actual property, not an issue that's created by the zoning ordinance itself and the zoning ordinances themselves. Because then at that point, we're violating our own ordinances in order to give somebody a variance. So, from my legal point of view, it would be best to pick the best number from the start, as opposed to going into it thinking that we should be granting variances. And I think if the commission has issues with that hundred-foot planning, and Brittany need to take a look and see what is going to be the best optimal distance that still allows those businesses to exist, but also maintain safety for the community.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
So, a municipality like Rapid City, Hill City, Keystone, they set their own, so this doesn't cover those municipalities, right?
No, it does not.
So, when you sit there and think of a county, two hundred and fifty feet's not a very large number, when you, when there can only be fifteen businesses throughout the whole county, two hundred, I don't see two hundred and fifty feet being a, a deal killer because they're gonna be in the county where lots and commercial sites are a lot larger.
I would say that's a fair statement, versus being in a highly urban area.
I would be in support of what, what your recommendation on that, and so I, I would ask that the staff review the potential zoning impact of that change, and, and we revisit that two weeks from now. I heard that there was a request over here, go ahead.
Go ahead, question.
So what are restrictions on liquor stores? Do we, do we restrict liquor stores to a hundred feet or two hundred and fifty feet or something? I mean, this is a legal business, and I think we need to remember to treat it like a legal business. I mean, if we don't want it, that's a different story, but the people of South Dakota voted in favor of this in significant numbers. And so we need to make it such that it's well-regulated, tightly regulated, but I don't think we should visit a burden on people. And I think you're right about the county, the two hundred and fifty feet probably is adequate. But quite frankly, it seems to me that the business person, the marijuana dispensary or whichever, should have some, the luxury of, of good choice. And you may say, this property is a better deal for me, but it's, you know, it's not two hundred and fifty feet from one of these other businesses. I, I hate to see us be too restrictive on this. It implies something that I don't think is necessarily the case, and also not something we wanna promote necessarily. And I use the analogy of the liquor store, which I don't think we, I, I grant that this is a new experience for most people, but, you know, it's time we, maybe, so that, I, I would not be inclined to support that, but, I, you know.
My comment would be, in a liquor store, normally you're not gonna buy a bottle of liquor and go out there and drink it within a hundred feet, but a dispensary, you could very easily ingest whatever. So that's, that's my rationale for being the two fifty opposed to the one hundred.
I'd rather.
Mr. Chair.
I just don't think that's the case. I mean, what little experience I've had, well, being around dispensaries. There aren't people hanging around out in front, toking up, you know, I, I just don't see that, but I, I understand that some people will feel that way, but I do.
May I make a comment?
Just a second.
Sure.
Was there someone else?
Yes.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Due to the odd lot configurations that folks can run into, the hundred feet can get difficult to deal with sometimes. Certainly, there's people with adult-oriented businesses have had the same difficulties in the incorporated areas. And we have some restrictions, but most businesses do have buildings, when they're built, have, are required to have a certain amount of frontage. And if we looked at it from that viewpoint, that defines your hundred feet or your two fifty, whichever the case. I, I would tend to support in the county a longer one. But it, it may have to do with the business frontage. In other words, we have some strange lots where a building could be on In other words, we have some strange lots where a building could be on an access and it parked way in the back and yet it's still within a hundred feet of the property alongside of it, follow me? It, it's just the, the, the strange configuration we run into in the county are not like the rural or metropolitan areas where you have the twenty-five by one forty lots in a lot of places. That's just what I was thinking. So I'd like to leave it open now too, where you could look at a larger number, but I don't wanna see, I'm like, I'm legal here, I'm not a great lover of variances, so, thank you.
We have, uh, Elizabeth Tiger, please, I believe, on Zoom. Did you have a comment?
Hi, yes, I did. Liz Tiger with six oh five cannabis. I am a resident of Spearfish, South Dakota, and I just wanted to make a, a statement to the comment about public consumption. Public consumption is, um, not allowed, or at least public smoking is not allowed. So you would not run into those circumstances outside of the dispensaries of people buying a joint and going outside and smoking it. And so I really just wanted to, to point that out since that seemed to be something that was important.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Besides smoking, you can have gummy bears, you can have ice cream, and I can name another five probably, so, uh, I, but I, I get your point.
Well, and with this specifically, I appreciate that you're writing your ordinances thinking forward to the eventuality of recreational, but I would like to point out that this is medical and so when we're talking about consumption, we're talking about maybe somebody who's having a seizure and needs to take their gummy outside, things like that. So just ask that you would keep that in mind as well.
Thank you for your comments. Any other items for, uh, section A?
I actually did have a little more, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
So on section three twenty-six A, number four, uh, when we're looking at marijuana cultivation facilities that are allowed with conditional use, um, it's the recommendation of the industry that we would add agricultural to that and also to number C, under marijuana manufacturers that are allowed, uh, to add agricultural. And the reason behind that is because we do have, uh, potential business owners who are looking to do vertically integrated businesses. So that's a seed to sale operation. So they would have at least three of the licenses available. So when you can add agricultural to those zoning areas, these business owners can keep some of their businesses on the same lot.
You guys have any comments to, to that? As far as allowing it in agricultural instead of what appears to be commercial and industrial?
Well, as far as the planning goes, I don't have a comment, I'll leave that to Brittany. But on the legal side, um, later on, um, it, our ordinances do indicate that growing outdoors is not going to be allowed. And that is just, that is a decision that we made as a policy decision. Now, obviously, that's gonna be up to the planning commissioners and the board to ultimately make that decision. However, that was included, um, given concerns, um, about access, um, that fencing would likely not be adequate in order to keep, um, individuals out of a cultivation facility, um, in addition to just concerns about the viability of safety and security for, um, the community, the industry, the added, um, costs to law enforcement to have to investigate. So while I understand that their interest in having agriculture is likely to be able to grow outside, at this point, our ordinances do not allow it as they are right now, our proposed ordinances.
Okay. Questions? Okay. Anything on, uh, B, section B? Nothing on B? How about C?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just have two quick ones, uh, screening, proof the applicant has satisfied Pennington County's preliminary screening procedure, and I'll just stop there. And it says, uh, it is directed by board resolution. I assume that's not something that's here in our ordinance? Is that what I'm assuming correctly?
It is not, um, and it is something that actually we are going to include as an ordinance. I had quite a lengthy conversation with, uh, Jay Alderman, uh, the civil deputy director, um, and we have changed, um, how we are going to do that and we want to put it in ordinance as opposed to it being, um, passed by resolution. So that is an additional ordinance that is going to be put before this.
Didn't have any problem with that, thank you.
So we'll just have to strike resolution and put ordinance, so that will have to.
Excuse me?
That word, the resolution will have to be stricken in the word ordinance in its place because we have changed to do it by ordinance instead of resolution.
All right, and then my second one was, uh, architects in, uh, number two, D two, architects or engineers drawing on the building to be construction. Now that's both the existing and a new. Are we going to go by the state statutes about those stamps?
Yes, so they have to be South Dakota architects or engineers.
And based on certain dollar amounts, architectural are needed at a certain level of investment, correct?
Right, it, it would depend on the structure, the type of structure, cause a dispensary, is it going to necessarily need engineering requirements where a manufacturing or a cultivation facility may?
So we're not gonna, what I was getting at in the old days, I, and I can't remember, I don't know what it is now, it used to be three hundred thousand, once you hit three hundred thousand, you had to have both engineering and architectural stamps. And whether you're, and all I was heading with that is, then we may need more qualified people to review theirs, we may have to contract out because that's getting some complicated procedures, uh, that we don't have anybody on staff for.
Right.
Okay, that was where I was headed with that. This is a little more complicated when you add architectural or engineering than you, you first think.
Okay, further questions?
I have one, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Hi, Liz Tiger again, six oh five cannabis, and I have a question on C one H. It says, any additional information as deemed necessary by the planning department to administer this section? I appreciate, you know, wanting to leave that open again for anything that may come up, but this could also cause a hardship for people who are applying for licenses. And we're asking that, um, you have a standard timeline and kind of a definition as what these additional requirements could be. You know, without that, you kind of run into a problem of maybe you have three people that have submitted their applications, then you guys add an additional requirement, what happens to those three applications that were already submitted? Are they grandfathered in under the old requirements? Do they have to go back and amend them to, to correct for that? And what does that look like for future applicants as well? So it just leaves a lot of questions open and, uh, stakeholders have questions about that as well. So we would just ask that there is some definition or some timeline, uh, for the county to come up with additional requirements.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Good questions. I, I, to me, I think what you need to do is write those questions down and send us a hard copy so that we can really look at them and.
I'm actually outside. I'm an immunocompromised person, I had a doctor's appointment here in Rapid this morning, so that's why I'm joining by Zoom and I'm actually outside instead of at home, but I do have a document that I would be very happy to share with you guys.
I think that would be helpful going forward.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I did have one more on there, I apologize, it was on the next page. Local laws related to hazardous material disposal. The, at a county level, we don't have many of those, do we, Brittany? Hazardous material.
Where, where at right now?
Where are you?
Oh, I'm on, I had to flip over to page four of ten because I forgot that that carries that far, that, uh, number one carries all the way into that, I apologize.
Okay. We do have.
I am on two A.
You're on.
Two A.
Right, two A.
Okay, still under section C.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
So hazardous material disposal actually follows, falls under state requirements. So the state fire marshal does have to review all of these require, requests under the state licensing too.
That's, that was my next question. Who do we then, uh, ha, look to direct us because the county itself doesn't have much?
Right, Jerome will look at it, but I know that his, um, office and his counterparts are working with the state fire marshal's office on the requirements for these facilities.
Thank you.
We have two, um, speaker request forms, um, that I thought we would get to. I noticed that they, they wanted, their questions were on, um, I believe on five E, which would be still in section A maybe. So, so we don't get too far, um, I'd like to understand, um, what these speaker request forms are. First one is, um, Nicole Harview.
Which one are we on?
Well, I wanted, I wanted to make sure that we didn't get all the way to the end and then have to backtrack all the way up for this, so. Are you guys both speaking together?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, are yous?
I'm Wilbert Watson, I didn't have my request form up there, I apologize, but I'm Nicole.
All right, go ahead.
I'm Nicole with Heart Matters. I currently own a CBD manufacturing company out of Meade County and I'm looking at moving into Pennington County because they're not doing manufacturing in Meade. And I see on E that you say that the dispensary, if you have a dispensary on the same location, that it can only, it has to be twice the size of the dispensary, it can only be, but I just want to tell you that that is, that would be really hard because the warehouse, we're already doing manufacturing is huge and that would force us into having a, a very large storefront compared to what we're doing. And I don't know if, I, this is my first time coming to a meeting like this, I don't know if you guys are able to change that or what I need to do, but I just don't feel that that is there.
Hold on.
Making sure state attorney, it's actually no more than, it, they don't have to be the same, so the actual language is no more than.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But it says the cultivation facility shall be no more than twice the size of the dispensary.
Okay.
So I, I believe your question stands. And that was one of the questions I had as, as why was, why is this a, an issue? I guess a question that I would, uh, go back to you with, um, is, is there a, if you have a cultivation facility and you have a storefront on the cultivation facility, what is, is there a ratio that, um, that, that you would like considered?
There's also a manufacturer.
And if you don't have the answer, I don't want you to guess, I'd rather you think about it and submit comments to the county and they'll route them to us for consideration at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
I actually have a comment along those lines as well in the same section.
Hold on just a second.
May agree with the state's attorney's office again, and one option we could consider is just getting rid of that part completely. If we're not understanding why it's there, although I understand that other states and other counties and other states have followed that requirement and I know that that's where it came from, if we're not understanding what the purpose of it is in Pennington County, we can get rid of it.
Okay. Go, go ahead, uh, Elizabeth.
All right, Elizabeth Tiger again, and I was gonna echo that, um, we have gone over this, I also work with the Cannabis Industry Association of South Dakota and I went over this with quite a few people, um, in that organization and it seems to us that that co-location, uh, that requirement, uh, between the facility and the dispensary seems to be rather arbitrary and limit, it creates limitations for business owners. And as we know, this is already gonna be a highly regulated industry and so when we're adding things that are rather arbitrary, we're just giving another burden for small business owners to try and meet, um, for no real good reason. And so we would ask that section E be stricken entirely from your ordinance.
You're saying section A, five?
E, the, um, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, A five.
Total.
Number E, the letter E.
Okay. All right. And before I, I get to, uh, much further here, there, we had another speaker request form for, uh, Zenu, is that right? Renlin?
Um, I just had a, back to the hundred, the hundred foot, I'm ordering to you guys, is that from the, the lot line or is that to the structure? Like, because as a landowner, um, like if we're not, you know, deep in the city, you know, if we have a structure that's deeper than, so if I have a, than the lot line, you know what I mean, if my structure's in the very back, more than a hundred feet.
So that was covered in section B as, as in, boy, it says measuring of distances. All distances referred to in this section shall be measured from the property line to property line unless the distance is to a residential dwelling unit. Distances to residential dwelling unit shall be from the lot line to the closest portion of the residential structure. Did that answer your question? Okay. All right.
I had a comment on that as well. We kind of moved quickly before and I didn't know when I should speak.
Go ahead.
Um, I just on the discussion with that particular section and talking about variances being allowed for that, I just want to, um, bring up one point, that when we get into variances, aside from the, um, points that were already made, if we get to the point where the, you know, offending property owner has to give their permission to the potential business owner, you do run into a really great situation for corruption where that offended bit, uh, property owner, um, can say, sure, I'll go ahead and, and go with you on this variance for half your business. So just things like that, I'd like to point out to you there too, cause we do kind of, things that can be a really, really good idea on paper in practice can maybe not work out so well, as we all know.
Thank you for your comment. Go ahead.
I don't know why that would be a problem. I mean, it's a legal business, you know, I mean, uh, once again, I think we're investing ourselves with some vision of a dark, seedy sort of functioning entity and so people are gonna start, you know, soliciting payoffs in order to get a variance. I, I just think that's, um, out of the question. I, I, I just don't think that makes that sense, so I, I would, I, I think it's fair to, you know, have, have it as is. I mean, I just think that we, we have to continue to view it as regulated, but still legal business and I, I don't see that as being a factor, maybe I'm wrong about that.
Mr. Chair.
I had Karen and then I'll go right to you. Go ahead, Karen.
I had a comment on page, it's page four of ten, item two C. We're asking for a description of the source of power, electric utility company, solar diesel generators, the size of the electrical service or system and the total demand to be placed on the system. Why is that? Why do we need to know that?
Um, the cultivation facilities take an enormous amount of energy to run because of the lighting, the water supply. So that's important to be able to, to, you know, for the, um, I guess for the energy companies to be aware that that kind of facility is going to be there, cause there's a large demand.
Thank you, go ahead.
Uh, my question was, uh, so we're, you know, we're kicking around two hundred and fifty feet, why not a hundred feet, then why not zero feet? A hundred feet is simply some kind of a buffer, I'm just saying a little larger buffer.
Yeah. When I, um, reviewed a lot of ordinances, I looked at ordinances from hundreds of different facilities and most of those were fifty to a hundred feet. That was the, kind of the common, most, um.
And were they counties or are they municipalities?
Both, they were counties and municipalities in all different states that it had legalized and implemented ordinances. So I wanted to see, um, I, and I even went to ones that had been in place for a long time, California, Colorado, um, just to see kind of what works, what had worked for the community and what worked for the industry. So that's where we came up with that. Like I said, most of them were in that fifty to a hundred feet.
I think it's valid discussion point.
I'm just, whatever we do, I just want it to be good to the general public, not those entities that are gonna, you know, be financially awarded for this venture.
No, and I understand and that's why, like I said, I tried to look at, um, places that had implemented things and it had been in place for quite some time, um, cause they usually, those things get vetted out pretty quickly if it doesn't work. But that was the norm, fifty to a hundred feet was pretty much what was then.
Earlier, we heard the discussion out in Murphy Ranch where they felt that multifamily residences, uh, could impact the neighborhood, the integrity of the neighborhood. Well, if a dispensary went out there, I think that might be the, they'd have some concerns there too. That's where I thought maybe something larger than a hundred feet.
Right, typically our, um, commercial and industrial zoning is in areas that are pretty isolated in, in my experience and just with our zoning maps.
And that's what we're taking and that's why we're trying to flush all this out.
And if I may, again.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Liz Tiger again. Thanks, Liz Tiger again. Um, I just would like to once again remind everybody too that we're not discussing necessarily recreational dispensaries. What we're talking about right now are medical dispensaries. Um, I do work with 605 Cannabis, but I am also of, one of the lead coordinators for New Approach, South Dakota. I'm a qualifying patient, and I speak on behalf of patients as well. And what I have concerns with, with these, with ordinances that get to where they're too restrictive, is that we're talking about people with critical illnesses, chronic illnesses, people at the end of their life, people with disabilities. So the more that we restrict that, we do actually restrict access to people who don't have or may not have mobility like the average person does.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I think uh what we're doing with the re, or medical marijuana, we realize that recreational could be coming down the pipeline. So I, I don't think we want to write two specific ordinance for each one. I think what we're trying to do is make this one fit the recreational as well.
I understand. I just want to keep pointing out that this is for, you know, you've got people who are not gonna be able to just necessarily jump in their car and go, you know, and get to these places. And I would just ask that that be considered when we're looking at this as well. Because even if you have one ordinance to govern, that govern the two areas of the industry, you still have two areas of industry, you have two separate clientele.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
May I make a suggestion that we vote on the 100 or 250 feet right away, so we can get on and discuss other things without keep, without coming back to that over and over?
I think that we're taking all of these comments and, and suggestions. Um, now this will move forward with a continuing, with a continuance to next week, um, based on the discussion. Um, there's some research that's gonna be done with regards to that. But I, I'm not comfortable voting now, not understanding the implications from the zoning perspective. That would, that's my, that's my own opinion.
I don't think we have any guidance to give to planning about what we want to see in the ordinance the next time is, is my concern.
Well, I think the planning staff is gonna come back and, and um let us know from the zoning aspect how restrictive the 250 is versus the 100, after you guys cross-check properties, correct? Yeah.
And then Chair, can I just speak to our zoning districts? As far as the zoning districts, when we looked at it, a dispensary is like, we looked at it as somewhat of like a retail business. So if someone were having to go to a pharmacy, it would be in a commercial zoning district, no different than what a dispensary would be for marijuana.
Sure. Okay. And then it, it sounds like, uh, Elizabeth, that, that you have a lot of comments. I think to streamline the process here, um, we'll go through the section, we'll ask our comments of, of staff, and then once we're done with comments from staff, I'll open it up and we can kind of go through your items, if, if that works.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
So we are still on section C. Any other items in section C? Section C carries all the way to seven, page seven of 10.
I do have more on section C.
I don't see any others up here. Go, go ahead.
So, um, just kind of, this is, we jumped ahead earlier and kind of discussed this, the outdoor cultivation. I just want to address that quickly, since we're looking at C, uh, C three C for that. Um, I ju, uh, and number one, we would recommend that you eliminate the restriction on outdoor cultivation, just for the simple fact that when you eliminate the opportunity for outdoor cultivation, which is allowed by ARSD 4490, uh, the county is eliminating an opportunity for small capital investors to get into the business. It saves a business owner towards their overhead costs to allow the opportunity for outdoor cultivation. And this can be disingenuous maybe to our farmers who would like to add this crop to their portfolio. Um, and then by rule, ARSD 4490 0504, uh, cultivation area. Um, and there are requirements surrounding all of that that maybe it'd be better to put into a message to you guys, but I would just ask that you revisit that portion of it for the main reasons I pu, I discussed there.
Okay, so you're gonna submit those comments to staff?
Yes, uh, I can, I'll get this entire document to you, but it just, it outlines some more of the law and the rules uh from the Department of Health. So, which they're actually hearing on today in peer as we speak. So, um, and then on E, under public hearings. Um, I just would like some clarification from state's attorney, um, on the position, when this takes effect versus when the new rules would come into effect.
What, what number are you on within section C?
Eight.
Hey Jade.
Uh, public hearings.
Can we see in E, public hearings?
Yeah, we're not on E yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead on you.
Yep, we're, we're only on section C.
Sorry about that.
Alright, let's see. Now, uh, no more comments in C. D is required notices. Starts on the bottom of page seven, has one, items one through four. Anything? Okay, Liz, do you have anything?
I do. Um, that's what I have there under E, public hearings. Just um clarification.
We're, we're on section D as in dog.
Oh my gosh, I heard E, I apologize. I'm nothing on D, on D.
Thank you. Now we're on section E. Public hearings. Go, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay. So, sorry, here we are. Um, if the meetings for the CUP aren't concluded within 90 days of the effective date of this act, um, would Pennington County then have a de facto ban on dispensaries, which would be prohibited under 3420G59?
We don't know where you are.
We don't know where you are.
So, E, public hearings.
Yep. Which, which number, what, item one or two?
Hmm, sorry, I don't have that part of my notes. I just have E, public hearings.
So E would be schedule, scheduling a hearing? E, part two, board of commissioners?
And there are a lot, there are a lot of public hearings that are required in order to satisfy, um, to satisfy the county with the way the ordinance is written. And so that's mostly what I'm talking about here. Um, we have deadlines that we see coming out in the rules, um, for uh people to be able to submit, submit applications to the state. So the question really comes down to if all of the county hearings that are being required by Pennington County extends that out, and it means that none of the applications can get in by state deadline, you know, does that create a de facto ban? What does that do for Pennington County? Um, and just would like you guys, you know, just kind of bring that up and see.
My understanding from, my understanding from the Department of Health's legal counsel is that the Department of Health is going to be requiring county approval first. Um, so I'm not exactly for sure where you're getting these timelines from, but as far as I'm aware, um, you have to get your county approval first, and then you can apply for your state licensing.
Correct. And I'm getting the timelines from ARSD 4490 0312, department rules.
Okay. So the question is, is uh if there's a timeline that the state is set and they don't get through the county process quick enough?
Our understanding is you can't even apply for the state until you have county, local approval.
So I'm not exactly for sure where she is getting these timelines from, because you can't apply to the state until you get county approval.
So I can actually quote that or cite that for you in one second here.
Could you submit this just as a comment so we can keep going on uh through, through the, the items uh to county staff as well?
Sure, sure. I just would leave that with, uh, the timeline that I'm getting is coming from the final rules draft that can be found online. ARSD 4490 03112, or one, uh, 12 outlines the timeline that the department is putting out for applications.
Okay. Anything else on section E? Okay, uh, we are on section F. F as in Frank. Anything from staff? Nothing? Uh, Elizabeth, do you have anything?
No, I've got nothing until 327.
327.
327B.
That's the next one.
Okay. How about section G?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Number five, uh, revocation, any revocation of a CUP by the planning commission shall be reported to the applicable state enforcement division. Um, just a quick question, and it surprised me how we're dealing, blending in CUP into all this. With the way we're set up right now, all the CUP stuff's coming through planning commission with not going to the board of commissioners and all this does. And then, so that my mind can be clear. So what I'm seeing here, I wrote down challenge as a big question mark. In other words, there's a definite challenge criteria that's set up for CUPs.
Correct.
Other than this. So that's where I was at on that. In other words, it confused me a little because we don't have a definitive challenge for revocation, explaining what the order of challenge other than the applicable state enforcement per county.
Right, we do under 510. It would go to the circuit court under a writ.
So it would be the circuit court option, like we used to have, years ago.
Like it is, you know, even under any conditional use permit, that's approved or denied by this commission would have to be appealed to circuit court under a writ. So this would be no different. But we would ha, so if this board decided to provoke a conditional use permit, we would have to let the state know because then this, they wouldn't be in compliance with their state license. That's basically what that's.
Is that challenge available after the planning commission work? Or is it after the board of commissioners' finalization?
So if, so this has to do with the revocation of the permit. So in the initial approval of the permit, it would go, it would be appealable from the board's decision, not the planning commission's decision.
I see. So I got a little confused there about revocation.
But the revocation would be under.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anything else under section G? We're on H. Section H, anything?
Mr. Chair, I just have a typo on the fourth line down on number two. You've got impede, and I think you need to cross out the, T H E. Any planning?
Which underwear?
H, bullet two.
H two.
Fourth line down.
Yeah.
Between the word impede and any.
It's just a typo.
Delete the word the.
Not very challenging.
At least you read it.
Section I, under fees.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I think this was gonna, we're gonna have to work on the fees, uh, at least other, with other commissioners. Uh, I don't have a problem with this, but I wanna, I wanna make sure that uh we all come to an agreement on what the license is gonna be. And I think that these fees should be some kind of a ratio of what that initial license fee is gonna be. Just food for thought. I'm not suggesting anything today.
Okay. Section J. And section K. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just have one general question under this ordinance.
Go ahead.
Can licensees sell amongst themselves?
It'll be in that.
Sell product or move product? In other words, barter, any sort of situation, can they transfer product amongst themselves?
So that's gonna be at the state level, um, because the counties really only have planning and zoning for regulation. As far as the actual sale and how that looks is gonna be at the state level.
Yeah, it came up when I listened to you guys talk about seedlings versus seed, and then, and I just could see some bartering or selling from amongst themselves. So then it's cash only, so how do you keep track of it? And, okay, so it's a state item. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just, uh, if we, we're working on the medical now, but if recreational gets uh approved, would these folks that have the medical feel that the recreational would be more profitable? Would they be in line to separate them from recreational beings they've already gone through all the medical?
So when we wrote this ordinance, the CUP is for use. So, um, discussions with Megan, in our opinion, um, whether you sell medical marijuana, or whether you sell recreational marijuana, you're selling marijuana. You're licensed from the state, and how you obtain the information and who you sell it to is going to be through the state requirements. Um, we're just looking at it from a planning and zoning, um, from a land use perspective. So, does that make sense?
Sorta.
Yeah.
Um, so we are through this section. Um, similar to the last ordinance amendment, um, I would suggest that uh staff have the opportunity to review some of these questions that have come up, um, and provide some answers in, in the next two weeks, and we continue this item to the, the next planning meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Move to continue until September 21st.
Is it 21st?
27.
27.
22nd, excuse me.
Is there a second?
Second.
I, I have one question if I could get it in.
Go ahead.
Is it possible to sell if you, if you get approved as a marijuana dispensary licensee? Can you sell that to someone else? I mean, is that?
Like the business?
Obviously that, if you sold the, the, the business to someone else, including the license, is that transferable? Like a liquor license would be?
So it's actually later on in our licensing, um, ordinance, so we will get to that.
Right. So just like any other CUP, that conditional use permit goes with the property, with the land. So if that CUP exists on there, the license is what would need to be transferred. I mean, the CUP would have to be transferred into their name and their, you know, just like any other conditional use permit that this commission sees. Um, but it runs with the property.
I had that down as a question, but I, I, I'm gonna bow to the commissioner. It, it was the same thing. It was over fees. In other words, it triggers a review, but it looked to me like the review amount was somewhat short because there's a lot of work to review on these. But yeah, so I just kind of brushed it aside. I figure you guys are gonna go over that.
Understand.
Good questions. Uh, further discussion on the motion. Noting none, um, the motion is to continue ordinance amendment OA 21 dash 14 to the September 27th planning commission meeting. Is further, no further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. So I, I would ask that you fill out a, um, a speaker request form. Um, we can certainly take that question in the next agenda item. The next agenda item is, is um 25, which is the um marijuana business development plan standards, and, and we can do it that way. Section 327.
Alright, so agenda 26 is ordinance amendment OA 21 dash 16. Pennington County to add section 327 marijuana business development plan standards to the Pennington County zoning ordinance, to add this section to the Pennington County zoning ordinance to establish development plan standards for dispensaries, cultivation facilities, manufacturers, and testing facilities operating in Pennington County.
Thank you. Um, let's uh continue on with our process, and I'll open section A up for discussion. Section A has bullet items one through eight.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just a quick, you'd be, I'm trying to get it lined up here, A, B, under one, the video recording. Uh, I put whether we should have some level of length of recording, what's the retention? Uh, all of those recordings, I am assuming available to you guys. In other words, some requirements about, because if it, they're only daily long, and the next day they get to put, to push the button and erase them, it would appear to be, that would be not in a, our favor for this.
And actually, um, in state regulation, they do have retention requirements. Yes.
Boy, I'm sure catching up on those state requirements, alright, thank you.
Further questions in section A? You can bring it up. Bring it to Jerry.
Thank you.
Anything else in section A?
Yes, I, I have under number two, there's another marijuana waste. It's on C two. It's the second page, two of four. Marijuana wa, waste must be disposed of in compliance. Just a clerical. Thank you.
Okay, so the word B, after the word must. Anything else in section A? Anything else in section A? Elizabeth, you indicated your next comment would be in section 327.
327, my comments are for section B, thank you.
Okay. Let's go to section B. Anything for staff in section B? Noting none, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Thank you. Under number two requirements, when we're looking at three, stamped architect or engineer building plans which confirm the requirements from PCZO 327A, I just have a comment on that one. At this point, we have stakeholders who are already having to pay $3,000 for a CUP, $5,000 for a state license, consulting fees, building permits, and tons of other fees that they have, that come up in the course of putting together a business under all the regulations cannabis has. These stakeholders aren't even licensed yet, and this requires, you know, huge capital investment. And so, we would ask that instead of looking for that stamped architect plans, that you allow them to submit sketches in this point of the process.
And then would you suggest that engineered plans come at what point?
Well, I believe that is required. I'd have to double check to see if that was required in statute, but I think there's language surrounding that in rules. I would have to double check, though.
Thank you for your comment. Anything else in section B?
No, that's it for me, thank you.
Okay. We're in section C.
On B?
B.
I had, I've got two billion numbers here, 4B, which is on the last page, 4, 4 comments, any comments or concern raised by, et cetera, et cetera. I put in writing, question mark.
Okay.
Rather than having it become one of these things, we see it all the time between planners, the planner never told me.
Okay.
Good point.
I think.
And then I had changes to the plan. What if an error or omission on the plan occurred from county planning? Changes to the development plan. In other words, we made an error. That was six. And then I'm done. You don't need to hear me, from me, except for Jerry.
I don't know if the, if there's, if there's, in my mind, that's a further question or something like that. That wouldn't require an additional fee normally.
Right.
If they submitted and they just missed one bullet point or something, they wouldn't have to pay another fee.
No, it would be something like where they completely change their design of their building or their infrastructure.
Only reason I brought it up because we're, our fees are so structured on this, and I can see why they would be structured. And again, the review process, whether it's too cheap or not, not expensive enough, I don't know. That's the board of commissioners' area, as far as I'm concerned, but, go ahead.
Section C. Section D is in dog, enforcement? Nothing? Okay. And I, I just wanna confirm, sir, that you have this for ordinance amendment 21-16, which is the next item, not this item, correct?
Yeah.
Is that what you, is that your intention?
Uh, no, my intention was to ask you a question about the storefront.
Okay, well, why don't, why don't we go ahead and have you come up then and address, and we'll get it answered?
My question was, we kinda got a backtrack a little bit, I apologize about that, but my question was in concerns with the licensing versus the storefront. Will we have to have the storefront already put in place in order to apply for the license? Or do we need, hopefully I'm saying that correctly.
I, I think that would be backwards in my mind. You can't have the storefront until you have the license and the state license, but I'm getting the yes nod from staff, but.
So, sure.
Yes, hi.
When you go into section 328, it'll be kinda before, so the board of commissioners will conditionally approve the license, and then they'll go to the state, get their license, and then after the storefront is constructed and everything's done according, then the official license will be approved and hung on the wall.
Okay.
Essentially.
Okay, that makes sense.
That makes sense.
Yes, it does. Thank you so much.
Yes, no problem.
I didn't write down the gentleman's name, it's Wilson?
Wilbert.
It's Wilbert, W-I-L-B-E-R-T, Watson, W-O-O-D-S-O-N.
Thank you, Wilbert.
Thank you.
All right, so we are at the end of ordinance amendment 21-15. Similar to the others, I would suggest we continue this to the next meeting, absorb the comments that come as a result of the questions and clarifications, and vote on it then.
Move to, move it to the, be September 27th, I believe.
Yes.
And final recommendations to be at that meeting or later. Thank you.
Second. Motion and second to continue further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no.
Who's second on that? I didn't hear it.
Jim.
Okay.
Jim was the second. We are on item 26.
Item 26 is ordinance amendment OA 21-16 for Pennington County, to add section 328 marijuana business license to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The description is to add this section to establish a requirement for all dispensaries, cultivation facilities, manufacturers, and testing facilities to obtain a license in Pennington County.
I will, let's open up section A to the board for staff questions, and I think these were your questions.
Yes, I have a question on section A. You know, you're talking about a hundred feet versus 250 feet, but this is saying there's only gonna be three licenses issued in the entire Pennington County.
Hmm.
And to me, that's ludicrous. Absolutely ludicrous.
It's actually eight, total.
Well, three dispensary, three cultivation, two, you know, manufacturing, I mean, each of those is a different, you know, type of scenario. And I think if Rapid City itself can have 15, that's really the county, which is many times larger than the city.
But you have to look at the population inside city limits as significant in comparison to the.
I can't hear you.
I said the population inside city limits.
Uh-huh.
The density of population is significantly different than the density of population in the county. And if each incorporated city, Keystone, Hill City, they all have dispensaries also, you have to consider those as part of it.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Meade County is only gonna issue one license for the whole county, and that's a dispensary.
That is correct.
And the cost of that license is $125,000 right now.
Huh.
I mean, that's what they're suggesting.
That is correct. That's my understanding of what Meade County is recommending at this time.
Well, I believe cost is gonna prohibit people in the first place, looking at all of the requirements that are needed for the facility itself. You know, you're gonna have to have a lot of money just to consider venturing into this business.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
You know, I think we're looking at a local level, but my understanding, Brittany, is that out-of-state enterprises could come and apply for a license just like anybody else and not have to reside here. The license, I've heard some war stories with some of these licenses sell for, and these, these outside, you know, I wanna be equitable across the board, I want everybody to have a fair chance to get the license, but some of these, I think there's companies that just go state to state, once they get legalized, they're here, they wanna get in the door, and they've got the funds to capitalize and build these facilities.
So?
I'm just saying.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jim.
I'll go back to my liquor store analogy. You know, I remember years ago that liquor, I mean, liquor was expensive here, terribly so, only because it was tightly restricted, the number of outlets, and people took advantage of the situation. It was a normal sort of economic decision. But I, I mean, I don't wanna see a skid in that situation. But I do think there are circumstances that, that contribute to this, that there are some costs of not just, not just fees, but organizational costs here that are far beyond what you'd think of as, you know, some small shop. And those will attract people with significant amounts of money. But, and I, I just don't want us to get into a situation where we've got one or two dispensaries, and they are dictating the cost for the consumer, you know, and I, and yet, I understand, this is a difficult thing to anticipate. How many? And I don't know what it takes to change this number. Just a vote of the county commission, right?
So, from a legal standpoint, it would just be an ordinance amendment. So, part of the reason legally why we made the decision to stick with a smaller number starting out is because it is far more difficult to remove than to add. So say if we did 15 of each, and it turned out that that was far too many, way more than the county could handle, it is exceedingly difficult to get rid of them when you have too many. Now, it is much easier to add if you realize that we don't have enough. So ultimately, from a legal standpoint, we decided to start at a conservative approach as opposed to starting with quite a few, with the knowledge that all of the municipalities that are incorporated are also going to be able to do their own dispensaries within Pennington County, and can make their own rules. And just that experience that we gained from going to Adams County and seeing the difference between Denver and Adams County, that was part of the reason why we decided to start small. Because I believe Adams County, which, what's their population?
Ninety thousand, it's about double what ours is.
So they only allowed six, I believe, of each.
Yes, they have 16 total.
So my question, I'm gonna extend it a little bit on Jim's thought, but more towards the county. Have, in, in your interactions with counties where this has already happened, do you understand, do we understand as the county, the requirement, or let me say this, the man-hours, person-hours, whatever it's going to take to facilitate these? And do we understand if there's gonna need to be additional FTEs? And obviously, those aren't discussions at that, at this planning board level, but certainly at the board of commissioners' level. And has that been accounted for with the numbers on the page?
Absolutely. That was something, too, that we looked at when we had spoke to their staff, their compliance enforcement personnel, their staff, to find out how many man-hours, what it takes for them to get, you know, through all of these with their 16 licenses. This would be something that would be manageable with this, you know, the staff that we have now. We'd have to hire another code enforcement officer in order to do, to manage all of these and our current code enforcement requirements. And that's just with this number. If we increase that number, it would require more staff, which would require higher fees because we would have to fund that position.
So as, at a minimum, the county would be looking at one?
Correct, because our, right now, as it stands right now, our current, current code enforcement officer would potentially be the person that does this, because he has been on the front line with all of this and involved in all of this, so we would have to hire his replacement for him to manage this program.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So what we're looking at is cost to the county to implement medical marijuana. So the county's not just planning and zoning, but so, so state's attorney's office and the sheriff's office.
Fire coordinator.
So what kind of an impact is it gonna have on those two entities?
Correct, pardon?
What kind of an impact's it gonna have, a burden on the sheriff's office and the state's attorney's office, if any?
Well, that might be a separate thing from the planning and zoning issue. But as far as our office in compliance with the actual manner in which it, which is being operated, as far as the land use issue, and any kind of code violations and just inspections, it would be one person. We will have some input, obviously, from all of those departments as part of that development plan review, you know, Jerome's office with the fire coordinators and things like that.
And the fees gotta reflect what we perceive that additional cost is gonna be. I just wanna know why we're $120,000 spread from Meade County and Pennington County, and I think some of the other commissioners wanna know that as well, so it's something to think about.
And part of the reason why the fees that we decided is because by statute, it has to be a reasonable fee. It's not clearly defined what counties are allowed to charge. The state is allowed to charge $5,000 for their licensing fee, so there is the argument to be made that $5,000 is reasonable, because the state is charging it. So, part of what Brittany did when she was establishing those fees is deciding man-hours at each step of the process, and then that actual ultimate licensing fee is the same as the state. It's a very conservative approach to the fees in order to avoid what is reasonable, because if we can back up the man-hours that are put in, so for example, if the sheriff's and state's attorney's office has comments on how much they, time they think that they are going to have to put into these facilities, we would love to see it. We have sent, obviously, my office has reviewed all of these, and we have sent them to the sheriff's office. We didn't receive any feedback from either. But if that is something that you would like us to solicit, we can certainly do that, to reevaluate whether the fees are appropriate or not.
I would entertain that. We sit down with Gary and other commissioners on a one-on-one, and just make sure that we're all on board before we meet again on the 22nd.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
In relation to Commissioner Coleman's comments, too, when we start restricting this, we already do with alcohol. We have license renewals, we have license transfers. The more we live in, puts a residual value on these licenses, which people tend to view as a great amount of anticipation where they don't wanna lose it, because it transfers to the next person and it's buying it. And I think that has to be considered, too, how valuable we want these things. So, how we would go at that, that's gonna be a factor. It's gonna be a big factor.
Go ahead.
We've talked about liquor stores, and I'll just remind you that a typical Class A liquor license in Pennington, in certain areas of Pennington County are 250,000 to 300,000.
I bet the market dictates that.
Right.
I mean, if people wouldn't pay it, then the price would have to come down eventually.
I agree.
And Chair, if I may, part of what we tried to do in the licensing portion is to limit that market value, that the money is gonna be coming back to the county as opposed to a third-party sale where these licenses can be sold for $250,000. There is a portion of the license, as I'm sure you guys saw, where it is not technically transferable, and a new person that is buying a marijuana license is going to have to go through the same process again.
I saw that.
And that was an effort to try to avoid the liquor license issue that we have seen and continues to happen throughout the county.
Mm-hmm.
And part of that is because of the way the statutory framework is set up for liquor licenses, it allows that, whereas that's not necessarily present in the marijuana statutes.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I agree with Sandra's comments about that is the market. I wasn't concerned about the market, I'm concerned about the pressure it puts on the staff to select the recommendations that finally come from them or us. There's a lot of pressure on that if there's only going to be three.
We don't select the three, the state does.
The state's going to.
The state will do the lottery.
So on other, okay, well, it's back to my comment, in other words, if I do something they don't like and they take it away after I said, "This is a good deal," then I just did a lot of work for nothing as a planning commissioner, right?
Well, the way that the state statutes are written, they have to get our approval first, so.
Even though we're doing all the legwork for them? Okay, just wanted that on the record, thank you.
And that is a concern that has been brought up to the legislature. I am not aware if there's been a lot of traction on changing that.
And I could see pressure at the state level, too, on who gets them.
Clarify that for me. You say, "We're gonna get, we're gonna give three of these various categories, and the state's gonna determine which person does this."
So ultimately, yeah, so I know it's a bit confusing because it seems backwards, right? And it is, from most states that have marijuana licenses. And it is from most states, um, that have marijuana licenses.
I've lived here for almost my life. It's, I'm used to this backwards.
It seems backwards, right? Um, but ultimately, what we're doing at the county level is we're giving conditional approval to whoever can get through this whole process. We send all of those people who have been conditionally approved for license, they don't pay their final license fee until after they get approved by the state. The state has a ranking system, and then they have a lottery if ultimately.
Okay, that, that was fine.
I know, it's confusing.
Question.
But they ultimately get all of the ones that we conditionally approve, and then the state does a lottery based on ranking that they have for criteria, and then if there are more than one facility that ranks the same, then they do a lottery, they pick names out of a hat. And those people that actually get the state licenses, those people or entities that get the state licenses, are ultimately the ones that are gonna get the final approval from the county to open their business in the county.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So we sent, uh, a team down to Adams Ca- County, Colorado, which we thought was very similar to Pennington County relative to demographics. And what they discovered is that the state of Colorado is the one that vets these licenses. Then it goes to the county. Here, we're doing the vetting.
We're doing the vetting.
And it goes to the state. In Colorado, Adams County charges fifteen thousand dollars for every type of license for a renew and, uh, and, and basically, what they're getting is something that's already been vetted by the state of Colorado. We are doing all the work, sending it to the state, and we get five thousand a license. So those are questions that we're gonna have going forward.
Mr. Jim?
Go ahead.
I wanna go back to the, to the question that our person on Zoom or on, on the call mentioned, is the deadline, the cutoff. It sounds like there is gonna be a deadline because we have all these people maybe that, that apply for the conditional use permit. We approve them here and send it all to peer. There's gotta, I, there's kinda gonna be a cutoff date that the state's gonna consider those conditional applications that we approved and pick three, so.
And I don't disagree with you. I am not aware in, in the regulations where it indicates that. Now, they just came out with new regulations and they may have added that, but as far as the previous versions of the regulations, I did not see that in there, which those regulations were taken into account while we were writing these ordinances. Now, I'm gonna take a look and see if I can find where she is talking about and see if there's anything that we need to change based on that, but I'm not exactly for sure what she's talking about. Because my evaluation of the statute is that they have to get approval from the county first, and then once they get approval from the county, then they go to the state.
Mr. Chair, just one question for Brittany. Do we collect all of our fees, whatever they may be, after the commissioners get done with them, before it goes to peer?
Um, the, well, we'll collect all of them, but just a portion of the, um, license fee. It's only because we require hearing fees, letters.
Will they pay that in advance? In other words, before it goes to peer?
And then once they actually get their license, they will pay the final, like, four thousand dollars.
I just wanted to know.
So.
Thank you.
And they did that similarly in Adams County. They waited till they got all through the process, and then they charged the fifteen thousand dollar fee.
Okay.
Um, but they, but they were vetted more through the state. They did a lottery system. So once the, they had their state licenses, then they did a lottery, and then they had a ranking. So it was the opposite.
People that don't get it, but they paid, that's what I'm saying, is if their name goes, they've already paid for all of our legwork before their name goes.
So these people invest this money.
Yeah.
How, how much do they invest? I mean, well, the fees, I haven't added them up, but I mean, I mean, what?
Ninety-five hundred.
Am I?
Ninety-five hundred.
Looks like it's forty-
How many people are gonna wanna do that?
It's, it's, it's forty-five hundred bucks.
On the assumption that maybe they'll get one of three licenses. It seems, these people are in the wrong place.
It's five hundred, three thousand, one thousand, and one thousand. So fifty-five hundred?
Forty, ninety-five hundred.
But then, and after, at the end, after they're-
That's after they're approved by the state.
After, then they would pay the four thousand, so.
So it's fifty-five hundred dollars to cover employee time and, and, and legwork.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's out of line for us. I mean, I think that they should pay. I, I'm just curious about people's motivations.
Yeah.
And it's gonna take us considerable amount of staff time and notification time and everything to get through these processes, just to get them approved.
So are we gonna put a big headline in the paper, "Today's the first day to apply for your conditional use permit for marijuana"?
Or the pre-screening, there probably will be something like that, yes.
Good. All right. Um, Elizabeth, do you have anything on, uh, Section A in, or in this entire ordinance amendment?
I do. Yes, I do. Um, just to kind of address the idea of caps in general, um, there are definitely a couple of different approaches that states have taken to cannabis in general, recreational, medical. Some you see where you have licensing caps done at various levels of government. Others, like Oklahoma, you see that they have no licensing caps, and they just let the free market sort itself out. Um, with regards to Oklahoma, just to kind of, I don't have all of the figures right in front of me, unfortunately, but just as a general overview, in North, or I'm sorry, in Oklahoma, we saw a huge influx of applications and licenses at the beginning, um, and it, and it grew, and it kept growing. Now, the market couldn't support all of the businesses that were, that were approved by county, by the state, I believe, at that level. Um, and so you've seen not just applications, you know, new applications decline, rates of them, but you've seen businesses close. So when you have a fear of having too many businesses in one area, you know, one thing I'd like to point out is the free market will sort that out. You know, if there's not enough, uh, bases for the demand and to meet the supply, places are gonna close, and it's gonna reflect the feelings of the, of the people in your jurisdiction. Um, another thing to consider when you're looking at caps is you are limiting businesses. Um, I heard this comment earlier from a commissioner, and I'm sorry I didn't catch your name. When you do put higher burdens on these business owners and you create a more restrictive environment, you are also creating an environment where, as was mentioned, prices go up because of competition. When prices in the white market go up, you cause people to turn back to the black market to source materials. So overregulation really can fuel that black market, um, that black market aspect of everything. Um, with regards to, and I guess that comes to not just, uh, the dispensary licenses, but, um, also product manufacturing. Uh, when it comes to cultivation licenses, I would like to just, just point out again, uh, that the less product that you have available to people, you know, dispensaries, especially in the beginning, will run out of product. It's common. That's what happens almost across the board, right? In states where they implement these new programs. Um, if you create a bottleneck of supply, that's going to continue to happen, and again, fueling that black market. Um, one thing that, Pennington County does have a lot of area, and this comes, kinda comes back to expanding cultivation into agricultural zoned areas. Um, if we create an environment where we can have more product going out, that's not only gonna combat the black market, but it's gonna help, uh, the black market in Pennington County, but it's gonna help all across in the Black Hills and across the state, theoretically, depending on what would be allowed. Um, and then the last thing that I have is I see that you're only trying to allow one testing facility, and I just am curious about that since testing is, um, compliance, you know? That's about keeping a safe product on the shelves, that's about making sure that patients do have, uh, clean products, products that are properly tested, have proper, uh, you know, percentages on the labels and things. So I don't, I don't understand limiting that in the county. The other thing to think about, too, especially with all of these businesses, but if we're looking right at analytical laboratories, you know, just the instrumentation, so that's your HPLC and your big equipment, is gonna cost a million dollars. On top of that, you've got tables, you've got solvents, you've got, uh, wages that you're gonna pay your employees, you've got, uh, building costs, build-out costs, all on top of that. So I don't think you're gonna see a huge amount of people that are trying to set up these analytical laboratories in Pennington County, and so to put a limit on it, to put a limit on compliance doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And with regards to all the licenses, I've heard some comments here about, um, you know, who's gonna put up this money, who's gonna wanna do this, um, and, and the cost that we're imposing onto these business owners. So we have a lot of local people who are looking to get into this business, and the higher burdens that we put onto those people, the less we're going to see our neighbors, uh, start their small business, and the more we're gonna see businesses like Curaleaf come in, buy up all the licenses because they have the income to dispose, you know, and to buy those up on a gamble, so to speak. In North Dakota, where you have a lot of severe restrictions, I think it's half or seventy-five percent, and they only have, I think, four facilities in the state, but they're owned by Curaleaf, and only one is owned by a local North Dakota person. The rest are all large, big cannabis entities. And all of that comes back down to caps and available licensing. Um, and no marijuana business will be able to take a loan from a bank. I don't know if, if that's something the commission is aware of, but everything that is done is going to have to be done with liquid capital. So just something else to consider as well.
Okay, we're on Section B.
Mr. Chair, I just had one background checks. Uh, I circled volunteers. I had a question about background checks and volunteers because I thought we oughta do something that it's contracted with an outside source.
So it's actually from state statute? That's where that comes from, so.
But could they do their own? I mean, even outside sources that are licensed to do this stuff make errors? They could, could a business do their own background checks?
Well, that, I mean, I believe that they would need to hire a company to do the background checks for them, and then they would provide those background checks to the state. We are just requiring a certification that they will do them.
Oh, I know, but that's what I'm saying, that the, the people, if you hired, I agree, are gonna do that job. If we don't specify that they have to contract with an outside source, I could see them doing it under the listing, I could make up my own listing of what I considered an accurate background check. That's all I'm saying, is that it should be with an outside source separate from the, I mean, that's the way most companies do it. Most firms that I've, I've gone through a number of background checks, but it's by a separate contract with somebody else you sit down with. They, they ship my information, I give them my name, address, phone number, and social security number, things like that, and they go from there. And it's not done by the company that's hiring me.
And as far as, if I can just respond, as far as how those criminal background checks are done, that's gonna be at the state level. We're only requiring them to certify that they will do them, um, because the actual-
Another state-level thing.
Yeah, so the actual semantics of how that is gonna work, because all we have is time, place, manner, and number of facilities. That's all that we can regulate by state statute. So the counties and municipalities have to be careful about how far they go into the regulatory weeds of all of this.
I understand it, but I do have a difficulty with returning. That's about the fourth time I've hit on an item that's a state control when we're out here doing the legwork and trying to put it together to make it a workable solution for these folks. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, this question would pertain to the medical cards. So to go into a, a medical marijuana facility, you'd have to have a medical card? Now, is that, it's my understanding that doesn't come from your doctor, but it comes from the state of South Dakota?
So the actual card itself does come from the state of South Dakota. Um, I'm not super familiar with how all of that works because I'm more on the planning and zoning side, but as far as I can remember from reading the regulations, um, they have to submit certain paperwork to the state. The state issues the card, and then the business that's actually issuing the marijuana has to verify that the card is legitimate, um, at kind of a base level of how it works.
But there'd be no cost to the county that-
No.
Okay.
Anything else on Item B? Section B, nothing? C? And D?
Mr. Chair, all I had, I have a hangup about ten days. That's difficult to notify county people that have an, uh, an agenda and wanna come in. Ten days is always a difficult. I never did like ten days as a notice thing. You can run something by pretty quick in ten days that a lot of people don't know about.
Isn't ten days the standard?
Yeah.
Notification.
It is, and it's by state statute.
We have a lot of people come before us at thirty days that say they never heard of or didn't catch it in the paper, and less and less people take the paper to read the notices. I'm just saying, ten days is even worse. Thank you.
Nothing else in D? And Section F? Section H?
H, Mr. Chair, I had on three whether it was fair, uh, and I have to, what would I say, tip my hat, because that's basically state requirements gonna come down and tell us whether, whether they were, something was denied or license renewal.
Is that from?
No.
Is that from state statute as well?
No, it's not. Um, we included the waiting period because, really, it's kind of the procedure of how this is all gonna end up working. Um, if you don't have, um, the necessary, um, stuff in place when your initial, um, license is denied, you're gonna need sufficient time to get your stuff put in place. Um, because those reasons for denial, um, as you'll kind of see under the required denial and the permissible denial, usually it's because you don't have a property, um, it's because you're a prohibited entity or person, um, it's because your location of the proposed marijuana business is not gonna be expressly allowed under our CUP requirements, um, or that you don't meet the distance isolation or separation. So all of those required declinations of a license, it's gonna take a long time to fix the problems that you have. Um, now, for the most part, our earlier, like the CUP and the development standards, that's gonna catch almost all of the ones that are not good. Um, but there's also the issue of, um, if you have a business potentially lying, um, to this, um, commission or to the board, we want to have some sort of mechanism for if businesses are not being entirely truthful, um, to staff and to the commission and to the board. Um, so there are permissible denials, um, and there are, um, permissible denials, um, for public health, safety, welfare. Um, so essentially, if a license is going to be denied, it's likely gonna take them some time to fix the problems that they have. So we don't want somebody who submits a license, their license is denied for good cause, and then they just resubmit the same license two days later again.
I just thought twelve months was excessive in that we don't necessarily, the way I see it now, after listening to you, that we're not really approving the licenses the state is. And so we, we have a, a stack of them, of which some, uh, could fail during the processing. And then other ones could be denied later in the processing due to state requirements, the, the, the things that are brought up here that are outside of our control. Well, then to decide, one, the ones that are outside of our control, we're not necessarily gonna know why they were denied. On the other hand, we will know these. Now, if it's a minor thing, the twelve months, the ones we do know, I have to separate again, the ones we do know, twelve months seems excessive if it was a minor. On the state side, we don't even know, and we're just automatically saying twelve months.
No, and I understand what you're getting at, and that section is a little confusing. I understand why you're confused.
But I can live with, I, I'm just saying, I think that it, it, the twelve months is unfair. I, it, it's not a big specific. I think we've gotta have something, like you say.
Well, and what I can include, um, is to specify that it's only for a denial of the, the county license or renewal of the county license. At the state level, I mean, if somebody gets denied at the state level and they wanna resubmit, they can, but likely those, you know, if we do a cap, those spots are already gonna be filled, um, unless we decide to add more later on. Um, so that's something that we can clarify, if you wanna put a note in there, that we can clarify that it's only for county license denial or county license renewal denial. Perfect.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I have a comment on this as well. Um, so one problem with having a twelve-month waiting period for, uh, the initial application for, is that you only are planning to allow three dispensaries in the entirety of the county. So if someone-
So if someone is denied an application, and let's say that it is something, let me back up a little bit. So I've started working on a cannabis application that's over three hundred pages long, okay? So in the course of putting together everything that, that needs to be done, sometimes things happen. Sometimes things we couldn't possibly foresee at this point can happen. You know, if it comes down to a location, for instance, there could have been a snafu with trying to get the documentation back and forth. You know, there are different things to consider. So when you have a twelve-month waiting period after a denial of an application, I think it's going to be a pretty safe bet to say that those three licenses could potentially be gone, and that business owner would then never have, or not have the opportunity to open their business unless somebody shut it down and they won one of those licenses down the road, or there was an expansion of available licenses in the county. So it just seems to me that that is pretty, I mean, I don't want to say what's fair and what's not, but it seems like that's kind of a big penalty for someone to have to pay for something that could be a big problem, as was suggested, but it could also be something that's little, that could be taken care of in the matter of a couple of weeks.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So instead of saying being, have been denied any license, could it be denied any license for some substantial cause? And so, if it's just something minor, you know, no big deal, but if it's something that's criminal in nature, that you're going to have to wait one year.
And, and so as far as the denials, the actual ways that you can deny, that the board can deny this license, Mr. Ross, connect, it's most important for you, because you'll be one of the members that is making the decision. So, the ways that you can deny a license or deny a rule, renewal, are outlined specifically in the licensing requirements. So it's not going to be some small thing that you have messed up. It's going to be a large, fundamental issue with your application.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So one of the things that, conditions that could cause a denial of an application is, let's say, one of the partner's background checks causes the denial of that application. That company could feasibly, very quickly regroup, take that person out of the organization, and then they would be in compliance. But if they did that and had to wait twelve months, they would lose, potentially, there'd be great potential to lose their opportunity to open their business. So that's one of those conditions that I was referencing.
Could I briefly respond to that?
Go ahead.
As I've mentioned before, it's only a certification that they will do background checks. The actual process of how those background checks works is going to be at the state level, and the state's discretion to approve or deny. And as I said, this is only for denial of a county license. It's not for the state license.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
To respond to that, it is the county that put a cap on licenses, and it's that that makes this very problematic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anything else on Section H? Moving on to Section I.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Under Section I, we have number three. All marijuana dispensaries shall post sign in conspicuous locations stating it is illegal to sell or transfer marijuana to anyone under the age of twenty-one. That particular sentence, I just would like to point out that that is inaccurate. According to state law, patients can be under twenty-one years of age. You can check ARSD for reference on this, but I would recommend that that be changed, that first sentence taken out, for the sign to read, "It is illegal to send or transport marijuana to another state. Possession of marijuana remains a crime under federal law." And perhaps, to address that first sentence, it could say something along the lines of, "It is illegal to sell or transfer marijuana to anyone who is not a qualifying cardholder." Or the caregiver to someone underage.
And if I might just actually offer some-
Go ahead.
-legal language that would work for both medical and for recreational marijuana, which, that was kind of the purpose of adding this in, is that the language, I understand the language that she indicated to you guys would technically work, but it would only work for medical marijuana, because you wouldn't, you wouldn't have cardholders if it was recreational. If you were twenty-one, you could walk in, you could get your marijuana, and then you could leave. So I will reword that to make it work for both medical and recreational, but I won't likely be using the language that she stated.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
If I recall, the legal amount that you can purchase in a dispensary is different for medical and recreational. Is that correct? There's a benefit to the medical?
That is correct, yes. As, as far as it stands right now, I believe Amendment A, if it ever is decided by the Supreme Court, only allows one ounce. Medical allows up to three.
Come on, Section J? And Section K?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Under Section K, license renewals of D, the licensee has committed any unlawful act. We feel that that wording is pretty broad. You know, would that also include a traffic violation, for instance? We feel there should be some more definition there.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Do we have anything that, that allows us to review whether they are financially, since it's a cash business, or whether that involves a renewal? Do we have any stead or footing, is what I'm seeing? Because I would think some of the businesses could get into financial problems, but it happens.
I, I think that's a difficult road to go down, because it kind of contravenes in the county and municipality's authority that was granted by this.
Okay. The only reason I brought it up, we do have about their billing lease and whatnot in ours, and with a billing lease, whether that's in jeopardy of being jerked from them, that sort of thing, was why I brought that up. Thank you.
Absolutely. And just to briefly respond to her issue under that three D, it's actually a may, not a must, so it's up to the discretion of the planning department to determine whether an unlawful act is something that should be brought in front of the board. I can't imagine that a traffic violation would be something that the planning department would want to waste their time on. Obviously, the intent of that is to get at unlawful acts in their business practices.
Okay.
One more, just a quick one.
Go ahead.
Calendar days are business days in six for the late application. Is that covered in our definitions?
So when you speak of ten days, ten days or under, it's business days. Anything over that is always calendar days.
Okay.
That's in the legal world, that's how it's counted.
Is that some sort of standard? Because that's the first I've ever heard of that.
Yeah.
It's, it's actually, it actually comes from state statute. It's not really a legal standard, per se, but it is typically what the legal profession uses for noticing, and when they are supplying somebody information, like if you're filing a motion or whatever, and the statute says you must file this ten days before, that means ten business days.
Okay.
Or if it says you must file this thirty days, to most attorneys, that means thirty days, but we can certainly specify that, because it's not really a rule in statute, it's just something that everybody kind of follows.
But I would say ninety days is ninety days, because otherwise it would say business days in front of it. That's how I would read it.
Yeah.
You can just add the word calendar.
I think we add the word.
Calendar.
Yeah.
Might as well argue over what's a few and what's a couple. We were on Section K, we are on Section L now. Nothing? Section M? And N?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Under N, under four, C, failure to comply with this requirement, may be grounds for revocation or suspension. Why isn't it will be, if they transfer without approval?
What was your question? I only heard half of it.
Why would it be may?
Four C says it has may instead of will. Why isn't it will, will be grounds for revocation or suspension of a marijuana business license if they-
We can certainly change it to will. It's a difference between, the board will be required regardless of the situation under these circumstances to, you know, pull the revocation or to revoke and suspend, whereas if it's may, then you all have the option to decide whether it's warranted in that case.
Right. Because if it's under may, because there, there would have to be a revocation hearing, and in the instance that the board finds in that revocation hearing that it isn't warranted to remove or suspend, if we put will under there, then that would-
Okay.
-almost make them pull it, in case there's some kind of circumstance that the board finds that was reasonable, and then they followed all of the conditions or requirements that the board put on them in order for them to maintain their license.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Karen, I brought up the same thing to them this morning. Well, what if somebody passed away that they had the contract with, and then a state took over? There's a time lag, plus, let's say there was errors, and that way it gives them some time to review before it gets jerked. We, that was the only reason I brought that up. Thank you.
Section O. Sounds like the fees will be discussed further, regardless of the comments today.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Brittany, I would ask that your office reach out to Custer County, Fall River County, Mead County, Lawrence County, and see how they're, I just want to see what they're doing for the dispensary, for the fee, and for the number, and the same for cultivation, manufacturing, and testing. We could put that in a summary, and then you could send it to this group, and you could send it to the commissioners, so that we could see if we're remotely close to what other counties are doing, because I'm sure every county's struggling to find the answers going forward, so it would help me to see what other counties are doing.
Mr. Commissioner.
Go ahead.
I can speak to Lawrence County. I've been attending their county planning and zoning and commission meetings. Their ordinance surrounding dispensary is a five thousand dollar initial licensing fee with a five hundred dollar renewal. I'm sorry, let me just say, I believe the renewal may have gone up to a thousand dollars. I would have to double-check.
Thank you for the information. Anything else in Section O? And P? Section P? Section Q? And S? With that, I have one last speaker request for him. I want to make sure we get Mr. Woodson back up here for his comments, and then-
Did you want us to be done? I had one general question.
Go right ahead.
And it involves my infamous DBAs, whether we have something to check out doing business as to legally ascertain who is behind the DBA. Did you hear that? I have, I think we need to look at, to make sure something, when something's a DBA, it's supposed to be properly registered, and the people that are involved with it, or firms, which then creates more checking, should be somewhere in there that we're reviewing these and checking out to see who DBAs are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Woodson.
Oh, yes, I apologize. I was trying to actually find the information right here that I had, but I can just bring it up. It's concerning the mailing of marijuana within the state. It's something that we're kind of running into right now, the problem, questions that I have. Can we, currently, are we able to, to, you know, send off our products in the state currently?
I have no idea.
No.
So, the mail service is a federal service? It's still illegal federally? So, no.
No, okay. That's, that's good. We got that question answered, okay. And then, secondly, it complies with the medical, medical stores versus the recreational, that may or may not be coming. Of course, medical would have to have a higher standard. We're assuming, correct? Is that what you guys wanted me to ask? I apologize. Yeah, you want to come on up?
Medical and recreational? So medical has to hold up to a higher standard, obviously, in a certain aspect, because it's obviously medical for patients and stuff, other than recreational. So when you guys do the rec, if we get recreational, is that going to open up more licenses for recreational and medical, since you only have three for medical in each category?
I don't think we're able to answer that question today.
Okay.
Would be my answer.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Oh, you weren't coming up to address that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I make a final comment?
Go ahead.
So this is just concerning the deadlines that we've been talking about. So this is for county attorney here. Forty-four ninety oh three one-two, in ARSD, is worded to say, deadline to submit initial applications for establishments. This is in the state. By November first, twenty-twenty-one, the limit wasn't, by November first, twenty-twenty-one, if the limit was enacted prior to October first, twenty-twenty-one. So that's probably not going to fall, or you guys probably won't fall under that category, but number two under that is within ninety days of the effective date of a limit enacted on or after October first. And so, that really does limit the time period that people have to get their licenses in. And I just wanted to reference that specific part of ARSD, so that you guys could take a look at it, and really think about how that compares with all of the hearings and different things that are required by your county.
Thank you for the information. Similar to the previous four or three, staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment twenty-one sixteen. I would suggest we continue this in suit with the other ones, so we can hear this on the twenty-seventh, after additional information has been received.
I move we continue this item to the September twenty-seventh Planning and Planning Commission meeting.
Second. Motion and second to continue further discussion. Noting none, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item twenty-seven is a county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from their August twenty-third meeting.
Items from the public. Noting none. Items from staff, the building permit report.
Yep, we just have the building permit report. We were down a little bit for August of this year, but we're still up quite a bit for twenty-twenty-one, especially on single-family residences.
Questions on that? Item thirty, if we could just get the legends added to the existing zoning and the proposed zoning, whenever those are in the staff report, I think that would help me as well.
Staff report and the presentations.
Um, I'm, I look at the staff report at that point, I would, I would have already seen it. If it's not any trouble, I'm assuming it'll just be the same clip that's added in, in all of the staff reports. That helps go through, go through things quicker. Anything else? Items from the membership?
Just wanted to note, so you guys can all think about it, six times the state is involved in things that are out of our control and that, that we're going to be looking into on these ordinances. Just, I think that's a really significant item. Thank you.
Nothing else? Entertained a motion for adjournment.
Still move.
Second.
Motion and second for adjournment. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.